Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Looking if there's any additions to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Administration would recommend two additions. 9.2.6, Community Hall Meeting Request. And 9.4.2, Sewage Dumping Rates. So 9.2.6, Community Hall Meeting Request. And 9.4.2, Sewage Dumping Rates.
Cool. Any other additions, gentlemen? All right, seeing none, I'm looking for adoption of the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Kravjak, for making adoption of the agenda. amended agenda. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Onto the adoption of the minutes, Regular Meeting of Council, May 28, 2024. Just looking for a motion. Thank you, Deputy Reeve Crick, for making a motion to adopt the Regular Meeting of Council, May 28, 2024, as presented. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. All right, we're going to go on to DA's 7.1.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So Administration received an approved development permit application 2024-D-019 for a front and rear yard variance for the construction of a single-family dwelling with garage on March 12th. The applicant has since obtained a survey or plot plan and is requesting a greater variance and added a side yard deck variance to the request. As per the attached plot plan in Appendix X, or sorry, F, the high water mark is further into the lot than what was presented to council on May, or March 12th. The applicant has engaged a company for a geotechnical and is awaiting their report. We actually received the report and reviewed it. They have been made aware of the waiver and restrictive covenant and are agreeable to that condition. Additionally, they are requesting a 25% variance from the side yard deck setback which would site the deck at 0.375 meters from the property line. The stairs will be removed from the plan and the deck width will be updated if approved. So recommended action is that council approves the development permit application 2024-D-019 for a front yard variance from 25 feet to 14 feet, a side yard deck variance from 1.6 feet to 1.2 feet, and a rear yard variance from 98.4 feet to 33 feet for the construction of a single-family dwelling with garage on Block 12, Lot 5847MC, within southeast 9616 west of the Fourth Meridian. As a discretion, our use pursuant to Part 3, Section 20, and Part 7, Section 71.2 of the Land Use Bylaw for Jeff Oduwuchuk and Heather Ross with the following conditions: An approved building permit is required as per the Safety Codes Act. Applicable electrical, gas, plumbing, and sewer permits are required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act. Building waste materials shall be contained onsite in a waste bin or covered slash enclosed trailer. As per Section 71.4 of the Land Use Bylaw Number 1667, the minimum setback shall be side yard 1.5 meters. Upon foundation completion but prior to inspection, an Alberta land surveyor building certificate shall be provided to the development authority. The landowner shall at its own cost and expense obtain a geotechnical report to support the relaxation of the setbacks and identifying any restrictions or recommendations with respect to potential negative impacts resulting from a flood, high-water table, or other overland water issues. Any restrictions or recommendations set out in the geotechnical report will be incorporated into and form part of these conditions of approval. The landowner shall enter into an agreement with the MD of Bonneville in the form of a restrictive covenant that may be registered against the title to the lands that are the site of the proposed development, which contains a waiver and indemnifies in the favor of the MD with respect to any potential negative impacts resulting from a flood, high-water table, or other overland water issues. Have any questions?
I don't see, yep, go ahead, Counselor Swiger.
Yeah, I'm looking at, I think it's Annex B with the, let me look here. Yeah, Annex B, so when I look at the aerial photo, can you describe that? Because it looks like, of course, the structure is in the other lot already. And so just verify that, and then when you look down further, there's a sort of a highlight of where they want the deck extended? And, yeah, why does it look like it's extended into the other lot? What am I not understanding by looking at that?
Through the Reeve to Counselor Swiger. So that cabin has actually been removed. Our aerials can be off, so we cannot go with those as a property line.
Okay, so I got to just ask the cabin, you're saying that that sort of highlighted or grayed out area actually is an old cabin?
That is correct.
Okay, it's not the deck then?
No.
And so what they want to do is they want to make the deck bigger going east? I think it's east?
East, yes.
How much distance is there between that deck and the neighbors to the east? Because my concern is when you start building decks that close to your property line, if a neighbor also wants a deck or whatever, then you've got neighbors partying in your backyard, basically, because it's that close. But is that not a concern at all then with this one?
They are asking for relaxation, and they will be 1.2 feet from the property line to the east, which they also own, but this is just a normal consideration that we would give any adjacent landowner, or any landowner applying for this variance, so.
So they own the lot to the east and there's nothing on that lot yet?
And there's nothing on that lot.
But if somebody does buy the lot then and then wants to build on it, then, I'm just thinking, you're forcing these people tighter and tighter together, and, yeah, I'm not sure. So he's asking for that extra variance for the deck?
That is correct.
Thanks for that.
Any other questions or someone like to make a motion? Yes?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Skarson, for making this motion. The council approves development permit application number 2024-D-019 for a front yard variance from 25 feet to 14 feet, side yard deck variance from 16 feet to 1.2 feet, and a rear yard variance from 98.4 feet to 33 feet for the construction of a single-family dwelling with a garage on Lot 12, Plan 5847MC, within southeast 9616 west of the Fourth M. As discretionary use pursuant to Part 3, Section 20, and Part 7, Section 71.2 of the Land Use Bylaw for Jeff Oduwuchuk and Heather Ross with the following conditions, 1 through 7. Any discussion on this? Yes, Counselor Swiger?
The geotechnical, they had done, I think we had discussed that in council, did we not? And we said they didn't need a geotechnical? Was that this one?
That was a different one.
That was a different one? So the geotechnical, interesting though, can you describe that a little bit? So is there any results from that geotechnical that we should be aware of? Because I haven't read it, but.
The geotechnical will be submitted, or we have received it, but it's going to be relating more to building code issues than development and placement on the lands.
Okay, so there's nothing that council should be aware of with that?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, that's carried. On to 7.2.
This is development permit application 2024-D-118 for Justin Dewan and Christina Rainbow. The applicant is applying for a side yard variance from 4.5 meters to 1.5 meters for the construction of a detached garage. The property is located in the Fontaine multi-lot subdivision on Moose Lake. Adjacent properties are residential parcels. The applicant would like to construct a 36 by 28 detached garage. They are looking to place it near the house and have limitations placing it further back onto the lot due to the location of the septic field. This variance would allow the placement of the garage to be set back, to be at the setback which is granted for lots that are 20,000 square feet or less. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on May 21st, and we received no concerns. As per Section 20 of the Land Use Bylaw, variances may be considered when there are practical difficulties unique to the land and when they will not interfere with the amenities of the neighborhood or materially interfere with or affect the use, enjoyment, or value of neighboring properties. Our recommendation for development application 2024-D-119 is approve the request for an east side yard variance from 4.5 meters to 1.5 meters for the construction of a detached garage as a discretionary use as per Part 3, Section 20, Part 6, Section 32, and Part 7, Section 71.2 of the Land Use Bylaw with the following conditions: As per Section 71.4 of the Land Use Bylaw Number 1667, the minimum setback shall be front yard 7.6 meters, west yard, west side yard 4.5 meters, rear yard 7.6 meters. Building height maximum 7 meters for accessory buildings. An approved building permit is required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act. Applicable electrical, gas, plumbing, and sewer permits are required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act. Building waste materials shall be contained onsite in a waste bin or a covered slash enclosed trailer as per Section 2 of the Consolidated Public Safety Bylaw Number 1812. Buildings shall be located, or shall be staked out by an Alberta land surveyor and submitted for approval by the MD of Bonneville prior to commencement of construction. Upon foundation completion but prior to inspection, an Alberta land surveyor building certificate shall be provided to the development authority. Any questions?
All right, thank you. Just looking for a motion, gentlemen?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Counselor Skarson, for making this motion. The council approves development permit application number 2024-D-118 for an east side yard setback for a detached garage on Plan 7620268, Block 4, Lot 3, within southeast 5616 west of the Fourth M, as discretionary use pursuant to Parts 3, Section 20, Part 6, Section 32, and 45, and Part 7, Section 71.2 of the Land Use Bylaw for Justin, excuse me, for Justin Dewan and Christian Rainbow with the following conditions, 1 through 6. Any discussion, gentlemen, on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. On to 7.3.
This is development permit application 2024-D-124 for Richard and Tammy Coster. The applicant is applying for recreational storage. The property is located 800 feet north of Township Road, north on Township Road, oh sorry, of Township Road, 615 and Range Road 451 intersection, 0.8 of a mile northwest of the hamlet of Fort Kent. Adjacent properties are residential lots and quarter section remnants. Administration was made aware of a noncompliant campground on the above noted property. Campground is neither permitted nor discretionary use in CR2 District. Therefore, the applicant will dismantle the campground but would like to store up to 10 RV units. They would primarily, primarily would like to store for the RVs for friends and family. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on May 21st, and we received no concerns. Our recommendation for development application 2024-D-124 is approve the request for an RV storage as a discretionary use as per Part 6 of the General Regulations and Part 7, Section 73.2 of the Land Use Bylaw with the following conditions: As per Section 72.4 of the Land Use Bylaw, minimum setback shall be seven point, front yard 7.6 meters, side yard 6 meters, rear yard 7.6 meters. Setback with adjacent public roads, 38 meters. Maximum RV units on site shall be 10. And this permit shall be, or may be revoked at any time if, in the opinion of the development authority, the use is or has become noncompliant, detrimental, or a nuisance to the character and amenities of the neighborhood.
Thank you. Any questions or someone like to make a motion? Yes, Counselor Fadav.
Hi, thanks, just a quick question. So you guys were made of air, sorry, aware of it? That was a baseline complaint by a resident?
This was through the assessors.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move to approve this development permit.
Thank you, Deputy Reeve Crick, for making this motion. The council approves development permit application number 2024-D-124 for 10-unit RV storage on Plan 0728599, Block 1, Lot 2, within southeast 35615 west of the Fourth M, as discretionary use pursuant to Part 6, General Regulations, and Part 7, Section 73.2 on the Land Use Bylaw for Richard and Tammy Coster with the following conditions, 1 through 3. Any discussion, gentlemen?
And Mr. Reeve, I hate to be a stickler with this one, but, so it was the reason they got, they were, they got in trouble for having a bunch of RVs there because people were staying in them? Is that it?
That is it.
So now they're applying for a storage yard?
That is correct.
Okay. So we will, we will kind of monitor that, though, and to make sure that it's not just they're stored but people staying in them?
We could do that.
I would hope so. Otherwise, it's the same thing, right?
Exactly, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, Counselor.
So at what point, like, is the difference between a bunch of friends getting there for a weekend or something like that with RVs as to what's happening here at the site?
So we don't have really specific rules on the RV storage, but it is for storage, it is not for camping. It cannot look like a campsite. That is why we have the condition number three, that if it does become a campsite, we can revoke this permit and they will not be able to have more than three RVs on the property at a time. It's hard to monitor on a weekend if we do get a complaint that, oh, they're having a big bash and there's 50 RVs on the site. Inspections happen Monday through Friday, or if police officers involved, tickets can be issued that way. But, yeah.
Well, I'm just wondering what the difference is between, like, a family reunion where brings their campers to the backyard or whatever as opposed to this? But you mentioned three, so they can have up to three campers sitting there at any given time, like, in use, or?
Yeah, so our Land Use Bylaw allows up to three on non-hamlet properties, one on hamlet properties without requiring any permits. So like the temporary weekend thing, if it's gone, we don't know about it, we don't do, we can't do any enforcement on it. But this was, this was a permanent type campground establishment, ongoing, not just a weekend thing.
Yeah, Counselor Fadav.
Yeah, I'll shed a little more light on that one. I know around my ward I have a lot of lots that are empty that people are using it for that reason, to have a family get-togethers, and most of the time it's not an issue. If they're there for the weekend, people are there, but it's the, you know, when it's, you know, two months, three months in, and it is more than seven or 10, then the neighboring, the neighbors have issues with, with just a basic noise complaints, but it's never seems to be the weekend thing, right?
Well, I'm just guessing that these people were, had 10 campers sitting there, let's say, and were meeting on the weekends and, you know, having a campfire on the weekend? So that's long, is that right?
That's not compliant to the Land Use Bylaw. Yeah.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
I'll just add a bit more to that. So I've had concerns in the past, you know, from guys who actually own campgrounds where their people are paying to stay, but, but then they're finding out, like, you know, a quarter mile away or whatever, you've got another 10 campers on somebody's private lot when they, you know, and we only allow three, and probably for that reason, because there's people that run campgrounds who are trying to make a living. And then, but then we're just, if we're allowing 10 or 15 campers, you know, across the road, you know, it's just kind of not fair to the guys who run, run the campgrounds. And then you, you know, you get 10 or 15 campers or more than three, because we allow three, that maybe is an issue for the neighbors, so I think it's fair.
Any other discussion, gentlemen? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. On to 7.4.
This is development application 2024-D-131. The applicant is Synovus Energy. The applicant is applying for a 115-feet communication tower and security gate. The property is located in Ward 6 North. Adjacent properties are Crown Land. The applicant is applying to install a 115-foot communication tower and security gate for access to surface mineral lease, mineral surface lease, SML 231326. There are no towers or residences within 500 meters of the proposed location. This application satisfies the antenna system siting policy 3A.009, as there are no dwellings within 100% of the tower height, and it is on an agricultural parcel. Adjacent landowner letters were not sent out, as there are no adjacent landowners. Recommendation for development application 2024-D-131 is approve the request for 115-foot communication tower and a security gate as a discretionary use as per Part 6 of the General Regulations and Part 7, Section 69.2 of the Land Use Bylaw with the following conditions: The development shall comply with Health Canada's Safety Code 6. Applicable electrical permits are required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act. Compliance with all regulations of Innovation Science and Economic Development Canada. Compliance with Transportation Canada and NAV Canada Regulations. The tower shall be constructed in compliance with the National Building Code and the Canadian Standard Associations, and respect good engineering practices, including structural adequacy. When communication tower and facilities become obsolete and/or damaged and unrepaired, they shall be immediately removed from the development and the development site reclaimed within six months of cessation of operation at the expense of the tower owner. Any questions?
Counselor Fadav?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Counselor Fadav, for making this motion. The council approves development permit application number 2024-D-131 for 115-foot communication tower and a security gate within northwest 871 for west of the Fourth M, as discretionary use pursuant to Part 6, General Regulations, and Part 7, Section 69.2 of the Land Use Bylaw for Synovus Energy Inc., with the following conditions, 1 through 6. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? I'm seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
Thank you.
On to 8 and 8.1, subdivision application.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Administration has received and is presenting subdivision application 2024-S-003 for council consideration, wherein the applicant is proposing to subdivide a 10-acre parcel from agricultural quarter section southeast 2061 for west of the Fourth Meridian, as shown on the map attached as Appendix A. Notification of the proposed subdivision was mailed to referral agencies and adjacent landowners with a deadline of May 22, 2024, to submit concerns to be considered at the June 11, 2024 council meeting. No concerns have been received regarding this application. Administration's recommended action is that council approves subdivision application number 2024-S-003 for a 10-acre parcel from agricultural quarter section southeast 2061 for west of the Fourth Meridian for Gilles Lord with the following conditions: Number 1, pursuant to Section 655 Municipal Government Act, that the owner developer install internal road approaches, including culverts, crossings to the proposed parcels, to the remnant and parcel to be provided at the owner developer's expense and to the specifications and satisfaction of the municipal district of Bonneville Number 87. Number 2, pursuant, pursuant to Section 661 and 662 of the Municipal Government Act, that if the subdivision is registered through a plan of survey, that the owner developer dedicate to the municipal district of Bonneville Number 87 a 5.18-meter, 17-foot wide strip of land for road widening along the entire frontage of the south side of the proposed and remnant parcel to be registered by separate plan, or if the subdivision is registered by descriptive plan, the owner developer enter into a land acquisition agreement with the MD of Bonneville for a 17-foot strip of land for road widening along the entire frontage of the south side of the proposed and remnant parcel. Number 3, pursuant to Section 655 of the Municipal Government Act, Part 1, Section 7 of the Subdivision and Development Regulation, the owner developer for sewage disposal shall install and comply to the Alberta Safety Codes Act and Part 2 of the Alberta, of the Province of Alberta Public Health Act, pursuant to Section 654 of the Municipal Government Act, that all outstanding property taxes be paid. Any questions?
Yes, Counselor Swiger.
Thanks, Mr. Reeve. Just a question about the road widening, 17-foot. Why only on the south side? Has it already been done on the other side?
There isn't, yes, there's a road widening that's already happened along the east portion, but it was not taken along the south portion.
Okay, thanks.
I'll make a motion to approve this permit.
All right, thank you, Counselor Slitjek, for making a motion. The council approves of the application number 2024-S-003 for 10-acre parcel, excuse me, parcel for agricultural quarter section southeast 2061 for west of the Fourth M for Gilles Lord with the following conditions, 1 through 4. Any other discussion on this? I'm seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, great day. On to 9.2, 9.2.1.
Good morning, council.
Morning.
Lyndon Shea, presenting Bylaw 1861, Amending Municipal Development Plan Bylaw. Bylaw Number 1853 for the Municipal Development Plan of the Municipal District of Bonneville Number 87 received third reading by council on October 24, 2023. A review of this bylaw revealed an error pursuant to Section 692.6 of the Municipal Government Act, and the proposed amendment is to correct that error. The amendment is to correct an inaccurate document reference in Section 5.2.1 of Bylaw 2017, which is not an MD bylaw, and amended to reference the previous Municipal Development Plan Bylaw Number 1367, as shown in Appendix A. To make the necessary correction, an amending bylaw must receive three readings. Additionally, this amendment does not materially affect the bylaw in principle or substance, and may be amended without giving notice or holding a public hearing. Administration recommends that Bylaw Number 1861, being a bylaw of the MD of Bonneville, to amend Bylaw Number 1853 of the Municipal Development Plan be given first reading.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Reeve, thanks. I'll make the motion for first reading.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Swager, for making a motion. The Bylaw Number 1861, being the bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville Number 87, to amend Bylaw Number 1853 Municipal Development Plan Bylaw to be given first reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Looking for, yeah?
Second reading.
Thank you, sorry, Deputy Reeve Crick, for making a motion that Bylaw Number 1861 be given second reading. Any discussion, gentlemen? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Okay, I'll call for the vote. Uh just waiting for one. Who's who? Is somebody not vote? Oh, that's carried, thank you. Okay, looking for another motion to. Okay, thank you councillor Slutick for making motion that council proceeds to third and final reading for bylaw number eighteen sixty-one. I'll call for the vote. That's carried.
Thank you.
And third reading? What's that? I thought I I missed something, but.
Yeah, I'll move.
And third reading as well.
Okay.
I'll move to do third reading.
Okay, thank you deputy Reeve Crick. Uh making a motion that bylaw number eighteen sixty-one be given third reading. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day. On to nine point two point two. I believe.
Good morning, council.
Morning.
So administration is seeking approval for roadway license bylaw number eighteen sixty-five authorizing the M D into an agreement to license the road allowance east of the southeast of thirty-six sixty-three of five in accordance with policy number three A point zero, one, eight as shown on the map on appendix A. The applicants have applied to license the road allowance to be utilized for access to a proposed new padsite at legal subdivision eight in section thirty-six sixty-three of five. Council gave first reading on the April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting of council. Public notification was completed as per the licensing of roadway policy and the M D public notification bylaw with no written concerns received. Administration is recommending that council give second reading to bylaw number eighteen sixty-five and furthermore, if carried, to proceed to third reading.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion for second reading, please.
Thank you councillor Fideh for making a motion that bylaw eighteen sixty-five being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville number eighty-seven roadway license be given second reading. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Looking for third.
Make a motion for third reading.
Okay, thank you councillor Slutick for making a motion that bylaw number eighteen sixty-five be given third reading. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? I'm seeing none. I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. On to nine point two point three.
We we're gonna have to get an extender mic for you, I think.
Tilt it up a little.
Um administration has been working on a review and update of the Moose Lake area structure plan to ensure that the plan is consistent with the municipal government act current practices, municipal policies and community aspirations. As all municipal A S Ps are established by council through bylaw, administration is proposing bylaw number eighteen sixty-eight for first reading, which will repeal and replace the previous bylaw number nine twenty-three Moose Lake area structure plan passed in nineteen eighty-five. The review and update of the Moose Lake A S P was initiated in February of two thousand twenty-four with assistance from community consulting firm Urban Systems. Data was compiled and a draft A S P was completed for public engagement. On February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, an in-person A S P area landowner engagement event was scheduled and completed. The amended Moose Lake A S P reflects input from the community focused on the following themes. One, to protect the long-term health of the lake by focusing on preservation efforts of the natural systems that protect the shoreline, biodiversity and wildlife habitat. Two, to promote compatible development by considering new development through the lens of potential impacts on not only the environment, but also existing residential and recreational uses. Three, to build on build on the expansion of the area by considering non-residential opportunities that are in line with the character of the area and establish a community identity. Um if first reading was to be successful today, a public hearing would take place on July ninth. And administration's recommended action is that bylaw number eighteen sixty-eight being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville to adopt the Moose Lake area structure plan be given first reading. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or someone like to make a motion? Yes, councillor Scarsen.
Um so on in policy or objective one point three, increase public awareness and engagement around the shared responsibility of environmental stewardship towards mutually beneficial goals of preserving and natural areas and promoting sustainable development. Um are you aware or do you like, do you know what partnerships we are currently engaged with? And what and can you list them off?
Um through the Reeve to council, um I don't have that information in front of me, but that can be revisited upon second reading.
All right, and then um next one I just wanted to ask about was long-term recommendations. Uh one is consider a storage collection system for cottages around the lake to ta- uh to tap into town of Bonneville Treatment Plant. So are these recommendations still current? Is that, and those are, okay, and then um explore the potential for large-scale restoration efforts in many upper lakes. Internal loading has been identified as a major source of phosphorus to the water column. At Pine Lake, a large-scale restoration use of hypo-linemic withdrawal technique was successfully used through phosphorus-rich deep water and significantly decreased nutrient levels in the lake. And so that's still a a level, um long-term recommendation as well.
Uh through the Reeve to council, if it's contained within the A S P, then yes, that's correct.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion or any more comments?
Just a discussion. Uh good comments councillor Scarsen, but unless this council actually, you know, put some effort into that, that just they're just a recommendation that sits there, right? So I mean, we've had these discussions. We I I've had him with Reeve years ago um on this council that when we we have the opportunity, when there's new development on Moose Lake to tie into the Bonneville sewer system, uh it just kind of didn't get any traction then, but it should always be on top of our mind to, I think, do that with sewer and and water. Um because the options are there, so anyways, thanks.
Any other discussion or someone like to make a motion?
I I'm okay with first reading, but I I honestly haven't had a chance to read read this yet, being gone to convention and traveling home yesterday. I went had the chance to get through most of the council package, but this one and the next one, I haven't had a chance to look through them thoroughly. So we can either do first reading and go over them more for second reading or just table them and and do it first reading and it later.
Mr. Reeve, members of council, this is first reading. A public hearing will be set yet. This will be a several month process yet before uh the bylaws finally.
I'll I'll move first reading, then we can ma- make amendments later if we need to.
All right, thank you deputy Reeve Crick for this motion that bylaw number eighteen sixty-eight being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville number eighty-seven to adopt the Moose Lake area structure plan be given first reading. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? I'm seeing none. I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. On to nine point two point four.
Administration has been working on a review and update of the Chicken Hill Lake area structure plan to ensure that the plan is consistent with the municipal government act, current practices, municipal policies and community aspirations. As all municipal A S Ps are established by council through bylaw, administration is proposing bylaw number eight, eighteen sixty-nine for first reading, which will repeal and replace the previous bylaw number eight thirty-six Chicken Hill Lake area structure plan passed in nineteen eighty-two. The review and update of the Chicken Hill Lake A S P was initiated in February of two thousand twenty-four with assistance from the community consulting firm Urban Systems. Data was compiled and a draft A S P was completed for public engagement. On February twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four, an in-person A S P area landowner engagement event was is was scheduled and completed. The amended Chicken Hill Lake A S P reflects input from the community focused on the following themes. One, to preserve the functionality of agricultural operations. Two, to protect environmentally sensitive and the natural features that surround the lake. Sorry, environmentally sensitive areas and the features, natural features that surround the lake. Three, to maintain a sustainable access that considers the overall impact of the health of the lake. Four, to maintain a focused vision when considering new growth and development oppor- opportunities. If first reading is successful, a public hearing will take place on July ninth. Administration recommends that bylaw number eighteen sixty-nine being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville number eighty-seven to adopt the Chicken Hill Lake area structure plan be given first reading.
Thank you.
Mr. Reeve, I'll move first reading. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kravjak for making a motion that bylaw number eighteen sixty-nine being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville number eighty-seven to adopt Chicken Hill Lake area structure plan to be given first reading. Any discussion on this? I'm seeing none. I'll call for the vote.
And Mr. Reeve, just for clarity for council, for both this and the Moose Lake area structure plan, a public hearing will be held on July ninth at the council meeting on July ninth.
On July ninth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that information. That's carried, thank you. On to nine point two point five.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve and council.
Morning.
Uh administration would like to present Iron River School Association Playground Project Update. Uh in two thousand and twenty-one and twenty-two, the M D of Bonneville donated a total of two hundred and sixty-two thousand towards a new playground project for the Iron River School Association. The project was successfully completed in two thousand twenty-three below budget due to unexpected discounts from vendors, as well as some work being able to be completed in-house, which was not originally the the option. Um in light of these savings, the association has submitted a request to council to confirm their approval of using the remaining funds for some additional features near the playground. With the remainder of the funds being forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-two cents, the Iron River School Association would like to propose a phase two addition to the project. No further funding is being requested. Uh their first choice option is to enhance an outdoor play area by building a pavilion to act as an outdoor learning area. Uh their second choice option would be adding an additional piece of play equipment to the playground. As this new phase two project is out of the scope of the original proposal, they are seeking approval from council to proceed. Attached are the following for council review and discussion. The appendix A financial statement, including initial project funding and remaining balance. Uh appendix B quote from the Happening Homes Limited for a proposed pavilion. Excuse me. Uh reference to the strategic plan, guiding principle, we value quality of life. Goal three, promote community development. Cost and source of funding, as as mentioned, doesn't uh is not requested. Uh community strategic strategy, the association will be notified in writing of council's decision. And administration recommended action is that council approves any remaining funding provided to the Iron River School Association for their new playground project to be used towards additional features near their recently completed playground area.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, uh not not so much questions, but lots of discussion. Um I've just been informed that like the Ardmore School and about three other schools in the area have been told by the school board that their playgrounds have to be replaced within five years. And and it's it's unfortunate for Ardmore because they fundraised for every cent of their playground. Um you know, and it's doesn't seem that old, but anyway, it's that that's the kind of the issue I want to bring up. There's going to be other schools asking for this. We don't have a, we don't have a policy for this or a procedure, so. Um you know, because we recently gave a lot of money to La Corrie and then Iron River. Um and it was kind of unbudgeted and unfunded. And I, you know, I don't have an issue doing that, but we can't, like when other schools now come and say, ask for three or four hundred thousand for a playground, you know, there's a possibility council to say, well, no, you know, that's not in our budget. It's not, we have no way to do that. So I just want to kind of make sure we're aware that we we probably should have some type of procedure or whatever um to do that and and um just kind of think about, I'm not sure, you know, what we do going forward when these other communities actually do need some help uh with their with their playgrounds. And I guess the other comment was Ardmore actually did put a they put a gazebo also kind of into their schoolyard, uh no no funding from the M D. Although the M D, I guess, waived the development fee of a hundred bucks or whatever it was, but um yeah, so I mean, there's people who, communities who can kind of afford it because they're they're working hard to to do that sort of thing, but and then it's kind of not fair to those who maybe can't afford it or who who can afford it, but then get nothing from the M D. So something we, I think we have to sort of somehow write into some kind of policy because it sounds like we're willing to do this. But we got to be consistent and fair to everyone then. I don't know if, I think I need some comments from admin or or from yourself.
So there, uh through the Reeve to council, there, we do have the Community Action Grant Program in there that uh nonprofit organizations can apply for, like they have done back in two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. That is the option that they can go through. Is that?
Okay, I'll ask you though, you think that's sufficient because that would drain um like when La Corrie asked and then for and then um um Iron River. Um I think that totally would have drained that that fund, so I'm not sure. I just need more.
Let I'll.
I think, Mr. Reeve, members of council, um I don't think it's administration's place to say whether a fund is sufficient or not sufficient. That's entirely within council's purview. I would suggest that the Iron River School Playground was more of a community playground because Iron River receives very little uh in the hamlet of Iron River. Uh in terms of the Ardmore, we have spent significant money in Ardmore in terms of an outdoor skating rink to the tune of uh over a million and a half dollars. Uh as for a policy, I would suggest again that a policy in terms of who gets what would be difficult uh because council uh will either abide by it or ignore it because again, funding for projects is entirely a council decision. And I'm not sure that a policy would would stand or or withstand a a budget deliberation when the when there are other pressures on council to do certain things. So I I would suggest that if it's a budget issue, uh that it it comes to budget deliberation. If a particular counselor wants something in a particular area, that that would then come as a budget deliberation issue for that year's budget. Um uh um uh so that that would be, I I would, I I'm not sure how we would write a policy indicating fairness across the board because uh that.
Every situation is different.
Every situation is different, and that would domino into a whole bunch of other things. Uh uh councils uh mandate through the municipal government act is to act in the best interest of the municipality as a whole. And if council views any particular project as being in the best interest of the municipality, then that's where council should spend their money, whether that's Ardmore, Cherry Grove, Iron River, uh La Corrie.
Et cetera.
Et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you.
Thanks for the discussion.
Yeah.
I mean, just, you know, we got to kind of keep that open mind and realize that it's coming, I guess.
Yeah, councillor Slutick, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, councillor Swager, you mentioned that the playground was built five years ago, like, well, what's the lifespan of a playground that the school is allowing, like?
I didn't say it was built five years ago. I said it was, they've they've given them five years uh until they have to replace it. And so it's, it hasn't been that long since they built it, but anyways, it's, they're telling them, so, you know, I guess they go around and look at these playgrounds and I'm I'm surprised it's has to be replaced in five years, but yeah, that's what they're saying.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to approve this.
Okay, thank you councillor Slutick for making this motion. The council approves any remaining funding provided to the Iron River School Association for their new playground project to be used towards additional. for their new playground project to be used towards additional features near or at the playground area. Sorry. Any discussion on this? Yes, Counselor Fidayev.
Yeah, I just really want to commend the community for saving that money. Yeah, I mean, usually, things like this don't come under budget, but, yeah, they made some savings and some, some things that they came up with, and, yeah, it's commendable, so thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Yes, Counselor Sutick.
I just want to repeat Counselor Fidayev's comments here. I also welcome them because that shows how important this was to the community, where the volunteers gave their time and resources in saving this. So it shows the importance, how important this was for them, and it's a great feature for them. Thank you.
And I'll just add, I'm happy that they actually, you know, aren't coming back to us asking for funding. I was kind of concerned that's what it was, but, you know, they've, they've saved that money and, and they've got to raise some more money to finish that, and they're not asking for it, so I'm, I'm happy about that.
Yeah, thank you for all those comments. I think Counselor Sutick did a little bit of work there himself. All right. Just call for the vote, I guess. Okay, that's carried. Thank you. Is there a group here yet?
We're here yet.
Nine point three, you want to go to that and then maybe take a break? Okay, nine point, three point one.
Mr. Reeve, members of council, nine point, two point six was the addition.
Oh, yeah, I apologize. Yep. We're cutting you off. Sorry about that. Yeah, I, my chicken scratch here, I went right over it. Community halls, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve.
Morning.
I report just a quick update on our community hall meeting request that we had at the previous meeting. So at our previous meeting, council had approved a special meeting of council to be held on Tuesday, June eighteenth, for the purpose of hearing delegations from our rural community halls as requested by the Fort Kent Community Center. Since that time, the community center has requested the meeting be postponed until the fall, just to help them have a little bit more time for coordinating with the, with the other community halls. So with that, administration is bringing forward a request, their request, and our recommended action is that council approves the cancellation of the special meeting of council scheduled for Tuesday, June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at six P M. And furthermore, that council directs administration to bring the initial meeting request from the Fort Kent Community Center back to a future meeting of council for consideration. With the creation and the current drafting of our new grant policy potential, I think that as well will, may play into this, where if everything moves smoothly and that new process is set up, this might be something that the groups will be coming and presenting in that process. So we'll see how it progresses is the way that we're looking at it.
Okay, thank you. Just looking for a motion then? Yeah, Deputy Reeve, okay, thank you. We'll wait for it to come up on the screen. Thank you, Deputy Reeve Crick, for making this motion that council approves the cancellation of the special meeting of council scheduled for Tuesday, June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at six P M. And furthermore, that council directs administration to bring initial meeting requests from Fort Kent Community Center back to the future meeting of council for consideration. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? I'm seeing none. I'll call for the vote. Okay, that's carried. We're going to take a short break. Just waiting for. Hey, welcome back, ladies and gentlemen. We have a delegation at this time from the Coal Lake First Nations. Welcome and come on up.
Morning, Reeve and fellow councilmen here of the MD of Bonneville. My name is Rick Janvier. I am a Coal Lake First Nations member, a member of the Treaty Six here in northeast Alberta, which is probably one of the bigger treaties in the, in this nation, so that's who I am. And I'm also part of the steering, part of the committee member of the steering committee for our Treaty One to eleven gathering. I'm here today to present information on the gathering and some of the opportunities that are going to be available to the MD of Bonneville and some of the things that are going to be happening during that time.
Okay, thank you.
I'll let my friend introduce herself.
Hi, my name is Emmy Plant, and I am with Treaty Eight. I'm from Treaty Eight, and I am the event coordinator for the Treaty One through eleven gathering. So very excited to be part of this big event, bringing so many nations together.
Thank you very much. As you know, treaties have been part of our history as part in time immemorial. I'll just before, I'll just give a little background before I get into the event. It's an ongoing rights and obligations on both sides. When we signed a treaty back in Treaty Six, it come from eighteen seventy-one to about nineteen twenty-one, we signed a treaties, eleven treaties were signed during that timeframe. And one of the ones that were signed here was Treaty Six at Fort Pick and Fort Carlton. And part of that was a binding agreement between nations to become, and which has become part of international law. Treaty making is used to build relationships with First Nations based on the principles of mutual respect, recognition, and reconciliation. The intent of treaties is to create a bridge to the future First Nations peoples and newcomers alike back at that time, during contact. Brother to brother relations, or sister to sister, we call it, right? Going down the boat together, down the river. If anybody strays off, we help each other. We stray off, we help each other, go back on a straight line to be able to go along that path as we go forward. First Nation people saw the treaty arrangements as a partnership in which two parties would live together, like, like I said, as brothers side by side. As you can see on the two-row Wampum belt, if you're very familiar with that, there's two rows, both of them represents the indigenous people and the comers, the newcomers at the time to the country of what they call Canada now. So that's the purpose of the treaty, that's what treaty is about, and that's what I'm here to talk about. Part of the Treaty One to eleven gathering is a, it's an annual event. It's held across this country of Canada. It's moved around from the east to the west. Last year was held in Winnipeg. Treaty One held the gathering there, and its issues are continued to discuss about what affects our treaties and the stuff that are happening right now within the whole country of Canada, with their relationship with the Crown. And that's what the discussion is about, to continue with our discussion, to discuss some of the issues that were talked about when the treaty was signed back, whenever treaty was signed, one to eleven. We're also inviting the Robson and Huron Treaties. Those are the peace and friendship treaties prior before the numbered treaties. So the event is scheduled from August twenty-sixth to the thirtieth at the English Bay Treaty Grounds, right on the shores of Coal Lake First Nations. The Significant Educational Conference aims to celebrate and strengthen the cultural ties and shared history among the indigenous peoples of the Treaty One to eleven nations. The Treaty One to eleven gathering will feature a series of engaging activities, traditional ceremonies, and discussions that highlight the current state of our treaty rights. This collaborative effort between Coal Lake First Nation and Beaver Lake Cree Nation underscores our commitment to fostering unity, understanding, and solidarity among other indigenous communities. I forgot to mention, this is a collaborative for between two nations, Coal Lake First Nations and Beaver Lake First Nations. We're expecting approximately a thousand to about three thousand registered attendees. Department of Events staff, volunteers, and vendors are targeted between three hundred and five hundred and additional attendees. So what we see here, when they come into the area with a thousand to three thousand attendees coming down to our location at the English Bay Treaty Grounds and with families coming in along with them, so we could see up to ten thousand people in this whole area, in the northeast Alberta area, which is Cold Lake, Bonneville, right up far as St. Paul. So we're looking at different opportunities that might be available and see what's available in terms of, of the MD participating when, when the events start. I don't have the, I can afford the itinerary once, but I want to do the overall presentation. It's going to be at twenty-sixth to the thirtieth, like I mentioned. The twenty-sixth, the first day, will be with youth, and the second day will be the elders, where they gather together to share information. And then Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and half the day Thursday is all about leadership. Discuss the results from the youth discussion, elders discussion, and, you know, some of the ongoing treaty issues that are currently at the table right now. That's what some of the discussions are going to be happening during those times. On Wednesday, we're going to inform, invite you Reeve, Barry, Barry Kalinsky, to come and do a welcome remark on the, on behalf of this, of the town of Bonneville, or, sorry, my apologies, on the MD of Bonneville. I apologize. I'm just in Bonneville here, so I'm getting mixed up between town.
It's okay, we get, that happens all the time.
Oh, Jesus.
You're not, you're not special, you're not the first one to do that.
So, so the MD of Bonneville, my, my apologies.
No problem.
Yeah, to come and do a welcome remark on, and part of the grand entry, carry the flag and whatever, whatever is required during that time on a Wednesday morning. We usually have the ceremonies that start at seven thirty, seven thirty in the morning with the pipe ceremony, and then we will have the grand entry at nine o'clock, where we'll welcome the different elected, elected officials from the area to come and do the welcome remarks. What's the cost? As you can see up there, it's going to cost about four hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and forty dollars approximately, because we got to provide, like, chairs, co-chairs, two elders, recorders, report writers. It's going to be two, two traditional feast, one with the elders and, on the elders' day, and one on the leadership day on the second day. Elders lunch, firekeepers, the firekeepers are the ones, because they kept the fire and they brought the fire back to our area, the fire will keep on burning throughout the discussion, so there's always a fire that keeps on burning because fire is the spirit and keeps that, 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 that momentum alive as we keep discussion about, about the treaties. Prayers, where we offer tobacco, part of our protocol, and that's going to be required. TPs, catering, hotel rooms for some of our, our, our chair and some of our co-chairs that are going to be required. Event workers, looking about ten. There's going to be a video production. We're going to bring tents, audio, video, gifts and promotional items. Those gifts will be presented to elders, elected officials, and special guests when they come in and do some of the welcome remarks or some of the discussions as they carry on during that time. We're going to have a drum group. I forget what, what's the name of that drum group? Northern Cree, going to be the traditional drum group on the Cree side, and we're going to have some Dene drummers from Manitoba are going to come in. So it's a culture between, what we're going to do during the Treaty Eleven is going to highlight the culture in this area, which is the Cree and the Dene people, and that's going to be highlighted at that, at that gathering. There's going to be a round dance on, I think, on the second day, Thursday, if I'm not mistaken, right? Yeah, a round dance and the tee dance, so it's parts, so part of our cultures are going to be displayed during that time. Drummers and singers, like I said, stick man. Part of our culture is we offer, when we do the events, like apples, tobacco, water, sweetgrass. Event coordinator salary, that's Emmy who's working with us, and the onsite security. The R C N P is going to have enhanced R C N P presence during that time. I have a, I have a good relationship with the staff sergeant in Cold Lake, and he has indicated that he'll have enhanced R C N P, is going to be also enhanced during the, during the time while the, while the event's happening. And that's the total of what's going to happen. So it's about approximately four hundred and thirty-four thousand, we're expecting. Where's the money coming from? Projected revenue at one thousand paid attendees, people can go online to our website at www.clfns.com, and there's a link that's on there. I'm not quite sure whether websites can be contacted. Where else can be registered further?
Yeah, you can also register on Eventbrite. We've done everything streamed through Eventbrite ticketing and on our Facebook page for Cold Lake First Nations and Beaver Lake Cree Nation.
So with that, we have a hundred dollars paid attendees. These paid attendees are youth, won't be, won't be paid, so that's under the age of seventeen, we said, eh? Eighteen and under or seventeen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen and under and sixty-five and over, right? Yeah, and sixty-five and over, there's going to be no charge. So it's the ones between eighteen and sixty-four that'll be expected to pay the hundred. It's going to cost, that's some, some of the costs, so required to have this, have the gathering. We did have a grant, I did achieve a grant from Travel Alberta, an amount of seventy-five thousand, as to cover some of the costs that I talked about earlier. Industry donations in our area, so far we got about two hundred thousand. Nation-to-nation donations from, if we get each nation, there's four hundred and some nations across this country, that'll cover a lot. We, we ask each nation at least contribute up to five hundred dollars, so I'm not quite sure. This is just a projected, where the money's going to come from in terms of the revenue. Ticket sales directly cover the cost of the complimentary lunch, with increased ticket sales, revenue and costs will still be balanced. Budget does not include in-kind donations, those toilets and barbecue lunches or infrastructure upgrades. So we're looking at upgrading the Coal Lake First Nations area by putting permanent washrooms, showers in that facility available. We're going to be, put an amphitheater on the side of the hill, so it can have discussion there. And I don't know if most of, if any of you have been over to our Coal Lake First Nations Treaty Grounds in, in, in English Bay. We do have that cover of the tent with a cement. We're going to, we're not going to increase, we're going to just add a little bit more coverage so we can get the people to come in and do while the discussions are on, so it can take up to, like I said, up to one thousand to three thousand people are going to be on site, and I'm not quite sure how many are going to be during the discussions. There's going to be activities during that time also. Maybe you want to talk a little bit about some of the activities?
Yeah, we're still farming, like, some of the stuff up, but we'll be doing, like, some, since at the lake, they'll be doing, like, some fishing, learning how to, like, fill it fish, hunting, and those sort of treaty rights, really focusing on those, and teaching those sort of ways as well, and then doing some security type teaching as well, where, because this time of year is so impactful for forest fires and where, where a lot of our nations are in remote communities, so safety evacuation plans and how to, like, take care of your home and protect your home in those sort of situations as well. Yeah.
Thank you. So those, so like I said, it's going to be enhanced, beside the discussion, there's going to be some other activities that are happening during that time at, at the grounds. What is the benefit to the surrounding communities? Excuse me. Cultural enrichment, the gathering will provide a unique opportunity for community members to learn about and engage with the rich cultural traditions, history, and practices of the indigenous nations. This fosters greater cultural appreciation and understanding among different groups. It's going to provide an economic boost to this area. The influx of visitors and participants will bring economic benefits to the local area with increased patronage of local businesses such as hotels, restaurants, and shops. This can stimulate economic growth and support local enterprises. Community building, by bringing together people from various communities, the event will strengthen social ties and promote a sense of unity and collaboration. Shared experiences and mutual respect foster a stronger, more cohesive community. Educational opportunities. The event will include educational workshops and sessions on indigenous history, treaty rights, and cultural practices. These sessions provide valuable learning opportunities for both indigenous and non-indigenous, non-indigenous, non-indigenous participants, promoting knowledge and awareness. Youth engagement. The gathering will feature activities specifically designed for youth, encouraging their involvement, connection to their, to their heritage. This helps in nurturing the next generation of leaders who are informed and proud of their cultural identity. So in, this is what's happening, and we asking for if any type of sponsorship of any time. We did send a sponsorship package out to, to the MD, so, and we want to see if anything could be done on behalf of the MD in regards of the economic opportunities that's going to be offswing from the gathering that's going to be happening. Like I said, we're going to expect up to at least ten thousand people, that's going to be family. going to expect up to at least ten thousand people, that's going to be family members that are going to be living, staying around the area during that time, so you can see the economic boost is going to be great for everyone in each, everyone in this area.
Thank you. Can you take some questions? All right, go ahead, Counselor Swiger.
Yeah, thanks for that, just because people are watching this and listening, I'm just curious again, can you sort of repeat, if somebody wants to show up, can they just show up, or do they need to, not a lot of people know about Eventbrite, so.
Yeah, well, they can register online, I'll get our coordinator to talk about registration.
Yeah, yeah, so they can register online, we will also have day of ticket sales, so if they just want to come down for one specific day to take apart, take part in one of the events, once the agenda is formed and released, they can come down and pay for that one day, which would be twenty dollars. Yeah, so they can certainly purchase a one day or else online through Eventbrite, it's all one smooth tracking, ticketing resource to use.
Okay, I just ask again, though, so if somebody just shows up, can they pay onsite, though, and?
Yep, yep, so we'll have, like, hand wristbands and such on sale for the day to attend.
Okay, yeah, appreciate that, because when you said online, well, that doesn't mean a lot to a lot of people, because I, I'll spend the rest of my life online trying to find it or whatever, but.
Yes, and if we did want to contact separately as well, we are doing offline sales too, and then just later following up, like myself, to process through online, so everything is tracked.
And I'm just curious, Counsel, if this is, I mean, it's not a question for you, but maybe, do we want, are we going to have a booth set up or something, or is it, or do we want to do that? I don't know, do we have something like that? Do, would you even want something like that? Let's just say no, and we're fine with that, too.
That, that's something that we would have to take to the committee to discuss.
No, that's fine, I just wasn't quite sure what the venue was going to be like, if you were going to have sort of.
I don't know if you, like, like I said, our treaty grounds is a big area, it's clear, it can, it can take a lot of people, there's only certain amount of spaces that are available to do vendors, booths, and there's going to be presentations, so like I said, with those amount of people, that's a lot of people. There might be some tents, capping, we're not going to allow any type of motor homes, anything, tent is going to be, tenting can be done, but in designated location, but motor homes and out there, we're not going to allow, because we, you know how people don't want to hear the hum during all night of the, of the.
You're close enough to the park, they can go to the park.
Yeah, there's parks there, there's different, so people can travel back and forth.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Counselors, regards.
I was just curious if you had any sort of plan for traffic and, like, not only locally, but is everyone just expected to fly in from, you mentioned as far as Winnipeg and stuff, they fly into the, to Edmonton and rent cars and come here?
That's what we're discussing right now, we're looking at providing transportation, maybe we're working, going to be working with, with Diversified to provide busing from the airport, we haven't had a chance to talk to Diversified yet, so that's arrangement that we can do through one of our companies, Primco Dene, which is one of our bigger First Nations owned companies on Cold Lake, so that's, that's arrangements being done right now, so we're talking about transportation, and that's being discussed as part of our ongoing meetings.
Yeah, and I was part of the, when it was held at Enoch, and they, they didn't look after transportation, but they definitely, like, with everybody that came around from the different nations, they're definitely impacted, like, for flights, car rentals, things like that, the accommodations, it's, looking at three thousand people per day, that's like a twenty-three percent increase on your actual, like, population to be impacted per day, so there's a lot of great potential there for all the businesses to see some great impact from this, but for logistics of, like, travel to and from airport, that, we're not at that point yet.
Even locally, right, like, from the hotels, because your treaty grounds is large, but can it accommodate a thousand cars, kind of thing, right?
No, no, we, we're going to designate parking spaces, like I said, we do have parking space at different locations, and we can provide transportation through the bus service or whatever, so that's still going to be discussed part of our meeting, we're trying to get, as part of the, of the logistics, like what Emmy said, right now we're just trying to get the itinerary done, so that should be done here very shortly, and then once that information is, is done, I'm pretty sure our coordinator will pass that information out.
Yeah, and we do currently, like, we've already booked, like, shuttle services to and from our parking spaces, especially for our elders and stuff, because there's quite a steep hill at our grounds, so we've looked after that part, it's just, like, spooking it out even further now.
Thank you, Counselor Fedeav, and then Counselor Subchik.
Hi, Mr. Janby, some regards to your treaty days, you guys usually hold, how much different is this, because I know there's, there's quite a few people that really enjoy the regular treaty days that you guys host, how much different is this compared to the one you guys usually do?
Treaty Days is a local event, held by the, by the Cold Lake First Nations specifically only, this one, the Treaty One to Eleven gathering, is a national event.
And as far as the activities go, is it, it's a lot different, right?
Yeah, it's a lot of difference, it's going to be focused more on, like, like what Emmy said, traditional practices, some of our treaty rights.
So this will be more on the learning part?
Yes.
First going out there, having.
Learning, educational, like what I mentioned, yeah.
Having a good time.
No, it's more of a educational, educational conference, it's, it's like a conference setting, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But there's going to be opportunities in the evening, like, people can go to, there's going to be different events, you can join our casino, or go to bingo hall in Cold Lake, or different opportunities available during that time.
And as far as fireworks go?
No, no, we're not, we're not going to probably, that, that's totally separate, that's going to be held on our second weekend in July, so, like I said, Treaty Days is a local, this Treaty One to Eleven is a national gathering.
So you still will have, you'll want your activity in July as well?
Yeah, yeah, we're going to have our activity in July, yeah.
Because I'll get asked those questions.
Yeah, yeah, that's no problem.
Yeah, and the Treaty Days is for, like, for this treaty, like you were saying, by locally, and it's more like bringing the community together, this is bringing everybody from Turtle Island, all nations together, for an educational conference, and really, like, getting outside and getting out of the conference room to be part of the land.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
And, and like I said, what happens is that each nation that accepts the fire, then, and they move it forward, like, it'll be from Cold Lake, it'll be moved on to a different location next year, I'm not quite sure where it'll be moved, but when they come to the local area, they always encourage to address or, I guess, promote the local culture, the local, like I said, the Dene and the Cree culture will be provided there, so there'll be teepees there, there'll be, in the evening, there'll be a round dance, a drum song, tee dance, part of the Dene culture, round dance, part of the Cree culture, traditional foods, we're looking at fish, buffalo is going to be provided, moose meat, just all the traditional foods you grew up on, so, and our ancestors grew up on, so that's, that's some of the stuff we want to provide, it's promoting also our local culture.
Perfect, thank you.
Counselor Subchik.
Thank you for coming, you mentioned that in Winnipeg last year, you guys held the event, do you have the numbers of how many attendees have attended, attended that event, and what kind of economic impact they calculated that it brought?
I did contact the Treaty One to Eleven, they gave me seventy-seven pages of information, a summary, they didn't do an executive summary as of yet, I've been under back to get that to us as soon as possible, continue on with that information, but I, I know there was quite a few, I'm like, I can't have the numbers specifically as per say right now, but I know there was quite a few, and the economic impact was great, so, it was right, I'm not quite sure where it was held, do you remember where it was held in Winnipeg?
Not sure with Winnipeg, no, but the previous year was Enoch, I have first-hand experience with that, yeah.
So we, you're expecting people, like, from the west coast, right to the east coast?
Yeah, right across this Turtle Island, right from the west coast, east coast, they're going to be here, so, it's issues that need to be talked about, that's still ongoing with the international, especially with the Crown, when it comes to treaties.
Well, this will bring a lot of recognition to the community, like awareness, so, good luck with the event.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Well, thank you for your presentation today, and have a great day, and, take care.
And we'll make sure, and we'll get ahold of your chief, CEO, I guess, right?
He likes, he likes the word chief.
Yeah, okay. I'll send him information, I'll send him more information about the sponsorship, about the sponsorship packages and all that, so.
All right, thank you.
See how's it running, so I'm not quite sure if he did or not.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
Just looking for a motion, gentlemen?
I'll make a motion to accept this as a future meeting of council for consideration.
All right, thank you, Counselor Subchik, for making this motion, that council accepts the presentation by Treaty One through Eleven, committee members, as information for more directs administration to bring back their requests for funding support for the Treaty One through Eleven gathering schedule for August twenty-sixth to the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, to be a future, to a future meeting of council for consideration. Any discussion on this? Yes, Counselor Fedeav?
When we, when we are considering this, could we see the sponsorship package as well?
Okay, I'm sure you guys will be sending us a package to, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, any other discussion? Seeing that, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. We were at nine point three point one, is that correct?
Good morning, counsel. This is the multi-year assessment appeal. In the twenty-eighteen tax year, the provincial assessor received an appeal on ten designated industrial properties. The properties involved the Navier plant site and the nine well pad sites associated with the plant. The appeal was based on insufficient additional depreciation to recognize the impact of the unstable ground of the Grand Rapids formation that prevented the Navier facility from producing the forecasted production throughput volumes. The plant site and the well pads were also appealed in the twenty-nineteen through to the twenty-twenty-three tax years. The Land and Property Rights Tribunal, LPRT, the board hearing the appeal, attempted to schedule the first two years of appeal, that would be the twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen tax year. Due to the global pandemic, the hearing and subsequent decision met with considerable delays. The hearing occurred on October twenty-sixth through to November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, and that was ten total days of hearings. The final board decision was on March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. Subsequent to this decision, the provincial assessor's office and the appellant mutually agreed to an adjustment for the two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-three tax year appeals, so those were the remaining appeals that were outside of the first two years that was actually heard by the LPRT. This agreement was presented as a joint recommendation to the LPRT board. The board decided, the board decision to accept the recommendation was filed on January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The summary of the boards, board decisions was that the Navier facility required additional depreciation to recognize the impact of the unstable ground. The method to calculate the amount for each year required a formula to compare the factors of the Navier plant to the same factors of the McKeeses plant, as the plants were of the same design. The factors included steam oil ratios as well as production values, volume, sorry. The LPRT decision assessments were applied to the subject property's role numbers, the tax accounts. The total tax levy decrease for all of those years was ten million, five hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents. Now, this total amount includes the school, lodge, and the designated industrial property requisitions, or those portions of the tax that they have to pay. Removing these requisition amounts from that total ten point five million decrease, ten million, two hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-four cents was the loss in the municipal revenue over those six years of appeals. Council and administration have prepared for potential losses in previous budgets for this, this decision, to the tune of eight million, three hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. One million, nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-four cents is required to be funded from the cash flow reserves. Now, the reference to the Municipal Government Act is section four ninety-nine, which basically details the LPRT's authority to make amendments to the assessment roles. So for the total cost of the, and the source of funding, out of the total amount, eight point three million dollars has already been budgeted for, and the remaining one million, nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty, fifty-four cents is requesting to be funded through the cash flow reserves. For a communication strategy, the application of the LPRT, LPRT decision to those subject role numbers, the tax accounts, have already been communicated with the property owner, the appellant's. Administration recommends that council approves the unbudgeted expenditure for the remaining portion of the Land and Property Rights Tribunal decision pertaining to the Navier facility in the amount of one million, nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-four cents to be funded from the cash flow reserves.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Swiger.
Thanks, Mr. Reeve, so just a question, I guess, so I can understand, maybe everyone else can, too, I thought, I thought oil companies got taxed on machinery and equipment and the value of that equipment, not on the, I don't know, not on the flow of oil or whatever? Explain that to me, it's not a value, it's not, is it not based on machinery or equipment and the value of that?
Through the chair to all of council, the framework of the assessment valuation process is how you are explaining it. There is a portion of the assessment that is based on the, the value of the land, there's a portion based on the building and structures, and then there's a component that's based on the machinery and equipment, and that's a huge portion. Now, evaluating the machinery and equipment, as I've kind of mentioned to council over the years, there's this four-pillar valuation process, there's the actual costs at the year that they were, they were constructed, there's a modifier to bring them to each assessment year's value, so it's a modifier, then there's normal depreciation based on age, and then there's that last pillar, that's depreciation, we call it an assessment schedule D, that is a, a loss in value, or a loss, or an obsolescence due to other factors that's not attributable to age. So this adjustment is reflecting that, that pillar, and that's where the LPRT has decided that this adjustment can be made and should be made under this pillar in the regulations for this other obsolescence. The use of flow put and volume is basically the first time we've seen it as a foundation for a decision in our area. So the short answer is, yes, it's based on the machinery and equipment costs, but that ability to make an adjustment to that cost, not for age, but for other obsolescence reasons, is allowed by, by the regulations, and the LPRT used this comparison between Navier and McKeeses, because Navier was basically built as a, as a cookie cutter of McKeeses, and the, the, the calculation for that additional obsolescence is basically saying, well, if McKeeses in year three, four, five, had this steam oil ratio based on these volumes, where was Navier? And if Navier had a higher steam oil ratio, then that difference between the two, the two is how the obsolescence was being calculated. I know it's simple, isn't it?
No, but it kind of opens the can of worms, though, because I, you know, you, I've said over the years, like, you've got businesses that do very well, you know, maybe for a few years, and then they don't do very well, but we don't, we don't offer them a tax rebate because they don't, not making as much money, and that's kind of what we're doing here, right?
Well, through the chair to all of council, the issue with, that was presented to the, to the hearing, was really that the expectations of the reservoir was, was calculated to be X, whatever that was, so they built the facility to be able to handle the raw product coming from the, the resource. When actually they started turning everything on, they found the Grand Rapids formation wasn't what they calculated it to be. So because of that, in our regulations, when machinery and equipment is, is, there is a framework of which that maybe what is available now for raw product to produce, that if, if it is a overbuilt now, that, that's where that question of that, that other obsolescence comes into play by, by property owners. comes into play by, by, by property owners to see if, well, if we built it for this, but we're only using this amount, is this part now non-assessable based on the regulations? And that's that gray area of, uh, Schedule D. And the ability to figure out how to write regulation to make that more finite for municipalities to know exactly what a potential loss could be is very difficult. I wish there was an easier answer. Us in, in assessment, uh, really would like that, but it is what it is. So now we are dependent upon the board's decisions.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of counsel. I think it's, uh, uh, important to clarify that this is not a municipal tax rebate. This is ordered by the province through the, uh, through the Land Use Tribunal, uh, that we owe this money. Uh, it is, however, unique, and I think counsel has valid reasons to be concerned that part of the adjustment was based on volume, and, and we've never assessed, or rarely have we ever assessed in the past, an assessment based on what a facility may or may not be able to do. It's a building, it goes up, it's filled with machinery, and if a person, uh, uh, if a person decided they were going to build an automotive maintenance garage, and they built the graduate assess, and they said, well, I only had two cars in for tire changes this week, um, and I was expecting ten, taxes don't change. This is a new, uh, and I, and I do think that this is one of those things that we ought to be discussing with the, with the, uh, with the, our local MLA. And there is the assessment model review that is currently, uh, um, just underway, and I think these are some things that need to be discussed, because if now, uh, throughout industry and throughout the province, if municipalities are going to be facing tax appeals based on declining volumes and declining, um, flow put, uh, et cetera, et cetera, this is going to have a fairly significant, uh, municipal issue from the south end to the north end of the province. So this isn't all this, um, assessment was about, but it certainly forms, a part of the assessment was in the, it was in the total volume that they had planned for, and as, uh, as Mr. Bespalko indicated, their, their initial assessment of the Grand Rapids formation is different than what actually started coming out, and, uh, we, we don't, we have no ability to assess on that, because we have no idea what, what those numbers are. We don't, uh, we don't assess that way. So anyway, I just thought it was important that this is not a tax rebate. This is being forced on us through the, uh, through the tribunal. Uh, the, the province in conjunction with us, uh, fought this, uh, the tribunal ruled otherwise.
Thank you, Counsel Slitchik and Counsel Scarsen.
Yeah, so, uh, just ten million plus was over a course of five years.
Six.
Six. So then going forward, we're going to be losing revenue of two million dollars a year off this.
Through the chair to all of counsel, uh, for the 2024 tax year and future, we have already, uh, uh, used this new formula, so there is, there is no additional losses based on this issue. This issue has now been addressed in the current year's assessment of the Nabye facility and those pad sites, and moving forward, we now have a formula that every, every year we have to collect the data and then calculate exactly what that new assessment will be. Is it going to go down? Is it going to go up? Is it going to remain relatively the same? That we won't know. We'll have a, a better estimate in the fall time as part of the budgeting process. But that's something that's always been on Assessment and Taxation's mind every year in the budgeting process of that variableness of, you know, what could get appealed and, and what could be the losses to ensure that council budget, if there is a potential loss or an unknown, the council's made aware of it beforehand. So it's a, it's a very interesting analysis we have to do every year.
Another question, guys. So how, how are we protecting, and what if a company decides to, uh, close in a few wells if the oil prices, uh, drop? They close in a few wells, well, they're gaining less production, they're not using the plant. So then they can come back. This might be said in precedent. I think we better make sure we talk to our ministers about this stuff.
Through the chair to all of counsel, um, if a pad site is shut down, the regulations are clear that, that, that machinery and equipment is now not assessed. So we get those every year. Um, the assessment team's going to be going out this year and taking a look at all the different well sites, what's been turned on, what hasn't been turned on. So that happens every year. The, the framework of the cash flow reserve policy, where counsel is already indicating to attempt to have a more stabilized, uh, uh, revenue, and, and we, that's a really good initial direction for, uh, for the municipality to know, how do we deal in the future with potential changes in, in revenue? Uh, if there's a year that we get considerably more revenue that was unanticipated or unexpected, what to do with that, that money, as well as if there's something like you're, you're presenting that, a, a shortfall that maybe was unexpected, where does that shortfall come from? But counsel already has created the cash flow reserve policy. That's a really good start to have a tool to try and keep things flowing normal, as opposed to always reacting every year to what is, especially at tax time.
Thank you, Counsel Scarsen, then Counsel Previa.
Okay, yeah, well, a few of the points of attention that I wanted to ask, but I'll, I'll elaborate a bit more. First of all, um, you know, thank you for, to your team for, uh, planning ahead, because a ten million dollar bill due today would have been a lot, uh, heftier, right? So good work there. Uh, we talked a bit about precedents and, um, I'm, I guess going forward, but I'm also concerned maybe about other oil companies seeing this and looking at their, their past tax bills. Is that going to be an issue going forward here?
Through the chair to all of counsel, um, the only time a, uh, an oil company or an individual owns property can appeal is in the taxation year from sixty days from the time the, the assessment notices have been mailed out. So based on this decision, if a, another company looked at this decision and, and concluded, we think we've qualified for this for the last five years, they cannot appeal that, because those years are already closed. It would only be for the current year that they can appeal on. And then that would go to the LPRT to hear.
Okay, and then, um, so that's good. And then, um, uh, so when, during this appeal, two things with that. One, can we appeal the appeal decision?
Uh, through the chair to all of counsel, there is a mechanism by which a LPRT, uh, decision can be appealed, but the, uh, framework of that appeal is not for court of king's bench to hear it again. It's, it's for a, a framework to see if the LPRT's decision or process was something that was not within this, they call it a reasonable test. And if it's within the reasonable test, then there really is no issue. In this hearing for the first two years, there was an application to go to court of king's bench, because at the time, the, the, uh, early decision that was made by LPRT said they were going to apply this Schedule D adjustment to the buildings and to the land. Well, the, the law doesn't allow that. So, uh, the provincial assessor's office was taking that to court of king's bench to say, the board acted ultra verees without merit. They were outside of their boundaries on that point. The, uh, LPRT looked at that information and concluded, yes, we will, we will amend it to reflect that, that adjustment Schedule D cannot be applied in these areas, and the, uh, the application to king's bench was withdrawn. So that was an example of how it can go to court of king's bench, but for municipality now to peel that, to hear that all over again, um, there is no option. I will say, the provincial assessor's office, um, in my professional, uh, uh, opinion, did a really good job ensuring that our team was right there with them through the whole, from understanding the calculation to the potential of where the LPT board could go based on what the appellant was, was bringing to the, uh, to the hearing. They did a really good job ensuring that we were a, 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 one of the main pillars in that process.
Okay, well, I, I guess it maybe answers my next question a little bit, because I was curious as to who, like, what kind of representation do we have during this appeal? Did we have a, our own room full of lawyers as well, kind of thing, or?
Through the chair to all of counsel, because the municipality has a contract to provide the assessment services with the PA's office, we were already involved at that perspective in regards to, um, uh, our team providing that service, doing the calculations, having all of the data and how we calculated everything. There is, there was a mechanism that if a municipality felt that they wanted to have independent representation, it's more like an observer, um, uh, through that whole process, municipalities can apply to do that. In this case, the municipality didn't, because we were already involved, and the PA's office was very, outside of any confidential, confidentiality stuff that, that, uh, the team couldn't disclose, was very open in, in ensuring that the municipality was knowing where everything was going. The overall direction by the PA's office was, there was no error in Schedule D. The, uh, the valuation was correct. Where that turned was the hearing right after our ten-day hearing. There was a hearing on, on a CNRL property. That the LPRT made a decision that identified what now qualifies for Schedule D. And because they made that decision, that opened the door for our appeal to then say, okay, if this is now the standard, let's take a look at all the information that was presented, and it does now fit that standard, that is basically the template that all properties throughout the province are going to be, uh, needing to use to see whether or not these machinery and equipment does qualify for additional adjustment. So through that whole thing, the PA's office was very good ensuring the municipality, outside the confidentiality stuff, uh, was aware of what was going on. And the PA's office, up until that time, uh, of that decision, was, there was no adjustment that was needed. The assessments were calculated correctly.
So is that why then we didn't make an adjustment until after the appeal was done?
Correct. If, if you take a look at the timeline, the very first year of the budget was the year after we had the hearing. And because of all of the volume of information that was at the hearing, as well as knowing the CNRL, uh, appeal was coming right after that, and that, uh, CNRL appeal was really focusing on that Schedule D and what would qualify, it was at that point in time that the, the, the discussion was, we should start looking at, uh, presenting to counsel a framework just in case, uh, there was a decision on Schedule D. And that's when the, uh, the, uh, amounts were, the, uh, budgeted amounts came in the budget. Prior to that, everything was done correctly.
Yeah, and then lastly, so how do we avoid this same scenario in the future?
There are, in, in the assessment world, as it pertains to machinery and equipment, and these four pillar, pillars, the last one being, uh, that, uh, Schedule D adjustment, it's basically taking the framework of that, uh, CNRL decision, of which the provincial assessor has done now a write-up on it, to really take a look and ensuring that we're communicating with the companies to get the information needed to see if a Schedule D is required. The issue on that is at times, we may not have the information at the time that we set the appeal. And that's why the, the cash flow reserve policy and, and looking at how do we deal with these type of adjustments that were, 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 uh, unbudgeted for, that there is a place to be able to get that money, um, and not affect the budget for the current year. The big thing is communication with the, uh, with the companies, and if something is looking like it may fit within that Schedule D, we may be presenting something at the budget, at budget time to say, this is how much we collected in revenue in 2024. We're unsure about maybe this amount for the 2025, uh, year, so it might be something to consider. You know, how is that recognized in the budget? Lower expenditures or funding it through a reserve, or from a reserve? So that's, that's about the best that we can do in this, in this environment.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Reeve?
Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Hogan.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of counsel. Uh, one of the fundamental problems that we have is the technology in the oil field moves faster than the ability to change regulations. So, uh, oftentimes, and we've seen it in the last ten, twelve, fifteen years, where things are significantly different in the oil field than they were fifteen years ago. Um, and these things come to light, uh, in many cases, uh, through an appeal, saying, well, you're assessing me based on the old technology, and now we have new technology, and then, uh, the regulations are forced to adapt to new technology, and usually that means that, uh, someone, some municipality is the first one to be appealed based on that, and then the regulations get changed or are modified or amended to address that new technology. So in, in many cases, um, because we're not in the oil and gas industry, we don't, and we're not playing with the technology on a daily basis or using it or creating it, sometimes we only find out through an appeal, or somebody saying, I'm, I, uh, the old regulation doesn't work for me, because I'm doing something that nobody's ever done before, and as a result, depreciation or, or machinery and equipment looks different, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, in, in many cases, this is, it, these things are just, uh, we happen to be the, uh, the ones with the, with this particular plant, but i- if you went five years ago into Central Alberta with the, um, shallow and deep gas wells, there was a pretty significant appeal, um, regarding those type of wells at other municipalities in Central Alberta. So we're, we're a bit of a victim of the, uh, of, uh, you know, the changing technology, because regulations just can't keep up with them, um, and that's, that's one of the fundamentals that we're, it'll just, uh, it'll just play out over time.
Yeah, thank you, uh. Okay, we're going to go Counsel Previa.
Yeah.
Counsel Swiger, then back to Counsel Slitchik.
Counsel Scarsen sort of answered my question with the, I was going to ask about the appeal and stuff, so I'm good with that. So what happens if this, uh, facility all of a sudden has an increase in volume? Do they pay more taxes?
Through the chair to all of counsel, the way the formula is right now to lower the assessment for that obsolescence, if the Mc, if the Nabye facility, if the, the, the volume of steam that they use and the, the amount of raw product they're able to actually process, uh, meets or is very close to McIses for the same age, what would happen is this additional adjustment Schedule D would be removed, which would then mean that the assessment would go up, but it would only go up to the value of the normal cost for that year and normal depreciation. It wouldn't accelerate above that, because the formula basically says, it's the cost of the equipment, um, at the year of, of assessment, and then you adjust for normal depreciation. So it wouldn't go much higher, but it would go back to where it was, uh, calculated to be before that obsolescence adjustment.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Reeve. Um, yeah, so interesting. So over that six-year period, we kind of lost ten million in, in revenue. Is that, is that correct?
Through the chair to all of counsel, um, I'm not the accountant here, so I'll, I'll say my assessment. The budget never lost eight million dollars, because every year for those years that counsel was putting that money away, the operating and the capital expenditures weren't affected. So it was money that the LPRT is saying should have never been levied, and counsel put eight million dollars away to offset that loss.
Okay, no, I, I guess I'll just reword the question. Um, and I'm trying to be positive here. So we kind of lost ten million, but what, what did we actually make over that six years? I'm just trying to understand the percentage kind of difference, sort of, you know, what, what were they actually paying us?
Okay, so let's see what.
I'm, I'm assuming it was significantly more than that.
The one question that I didn't have, oh, maybe I did. So over those six years, the municipal portion only for taxes, not including the school and the, and the, and the lodging and the dip, over those, uh, six years, the municipality would have collected thirty-four million dollars in municipal revenues.
Thank you.
With the decision, it's now twenty-four million dollars. So that's where, it's basically, um, you know, we're looking at, you know, ten million off of thirty-some million. Almost forty.
Counsel Slitchik.
Yeah, maybe we could talk with Imperial, if they'd be willing to donate, uh, keep us, give back a portion of this money to our import, airport improvement, and, uh, they could land their, their big planes here, their workers, instead of landing in Lloyd with their planes.
Through the chair to all of counsel, and assessment doesn't have a regulation for that.
That's just a comment.
I thought for sure you were going to say ten million dollar donation to the pool.
All right, any other, any other questions? No, thank you for that update.
So looking for a motion for, uh, the administration to approve the unbudgeted expenditure for the remaining mount, portion of the land and property rights tribunal decision pertaining to the Nabye facility in the amount of one million, nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-four cents to be funded from the cash flow reserves.
I'll make that move.
Thank you. Counsel Slitchik for making this motion. The council approves the unbudgeted expenditure for the remaining portion.
The council approves the unbudgeted expenditure for the remaining portion of the land and property rights tribunal decision pertaining to NABIA facility in the amount of $1,922,24,844.54 to be funded from the cash flow reserves. Any other discussion? Yes, Counselor Skarsen.
Uh, just one last comment. So considering that, you know, we saved, are we held back that 8 million or so? And you have about 1.9 you needed. Is it kind of right around where you thought it was gonna be as far as the appeal decision then?
Through the chair to all of council, at the beginning, no, we weren't expecting anything from the CNRL decision. Uh, yes, we were expecting, was it eight, was it 10? There was a range that it could have gone. We, we are close. We would have expected more of the 8 million dollars, but, um, it ended up being 10.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing on all, call for the vote.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Onto 9.4.1.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve and council.
Morning.
Today I have for you the Infrastructure Services 2024 First Quarterly Reports. Infrastructure Services has prepared the Q1 report for council. Transportation and fleet and facilities updates will be presented by me, manager of transportation. Uh, there's two appendices, appendix A and appendix B. Sorry, mine's a little out of order here. Transportation. Roadside brushing and ditch, and ditch improvements. Uh, request for tender was posted January 30th detailing seven separate roadway locations totaling 21.6 kilometers. The tender was awarded March 13th and the work is scheduled to begin in August after bird nesting season. All of these locations are in the northwest area of the MD, the Goodrich area. Drainage improvements, we received regulatory approval on two culverts, one on 604 east of Range Road 422 and one on Range Road 422 north of Highway 897, which is a fish-bearing uh, waterway. The 2024 to 2026 dust suppressant supply and application. The contract involving approximately 65 kilometers of gravel roads over three years was awarded on April 18th. Applications of dust suppressant will begin in June sometime. We are going to follow, uh, when industry performs theirs, which is in the imminent future here. They've been held back with a little bit of the rain down south, so they were supposed to be here this week. We're anticipating them next week.
Mr. Deputy Chair? Can I, uh?
Go ahead.
Can I ask questions actually, uh, before you go too far, or would you like to finish it and then we'll ask? It's up to you.
Sure, I'm fine with whichever. Go ahead.
Can we go back to the, uh, uh, yeah, I guess roadside brushing? Uh, we had a brushing plan some years ago and, and I think it was a 10-year plan. Are we still following a brushing plan and if we are or if we're not? I'd just like to know, um, what areas or what roads so that if I get called about it, I'll state to folks, know we're, we're doing this. And, and these folks, the reason we had a 10-year plan is because then the folks would know years in advance when they're brushing the roads so that they could plan for planting new trees or whatever. Because I, I get those complaints when the, yeah, when you're brushing, you're taking all their trees or whatever, which of course aren't their trees, but it's just, they'd like to know. So what was?
Through the reef to, uh, Counselor Swagert. Um, I'm not familiar with the 10-year plan. We do it on a year-by-year basis. And this portion that I'm referring to is the, is a large portion. It's a large amount of our budget. This does not include the, the self-performed work, which is, which is an ongoing. So we do an assessment on the roads throughout the year. And we've separated it due to mobilization factors. Uh, the first year in 2022, we were in the Alexander area. Uh, just basically that was an extension of the, of the previous year to, to complete the work. Um, last year we were in more central, the Bonneville area, south of Bonneville. And we're trying to focus on the west this year. Next year we will be moving back to the east end of the municipality. But if there's a problem area, we self-perform it as well.
Okay, I'll just.
So we're not following any set.
I'll just ask maybe, I, I think, uh, the reason we had a 10-year plan is because people were really not so happy when we started brushing their roads. But we, we thought we'd, if we gave them that much notice, then at least they're aware of, you know, a few years in advance. But, so if we're not doing that anymore, I, I think I'd like, uh, if you would provide council with the roads that you're actually brushing. Uh, I mean, at least I'd be, I'd like to know that for my word so that I can, you know, let people know when they call me, you know, what's going on and when. Because I'll get calls guaranteed.
Sure. So through the reef to Counselor Swagert, um, this information is on our website on the RFT, but I can supply you with a, with a map. That's not an issue.
Okay, no, that's fine. And if I can go to the website and find, and it'll tell me which roads are being done?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Fidiev, then Counselor Slipchak.
Yeah, I totally hear your concerns. I had the same concerns with, uh, some, some of the brushing that was done. Uh, administration was really good to work with the, uh, with the residents and left trees in front of, uh, their, you know, their yards and took care of everything else. So they, they work really well with the, uh, with the residents that, uh, that the brushing is along the lines with. So, uh, more positive than, than negative for sure.
Counselor Slipchak.
Yeah, so the current, uh, roads that you've brushed already, have you seen a significant dis- uh, difference in the road?
Quality?
Road, uh?
Quality? Quality?
Yeah.
Through the reef to Counselor Slipchak, it's probably too early to tell, but any improvement to the, getting the water away from the roads and getting more sunlight on it will be an improvement to the roads. That coupled with our, uh, with our, the dam, some of it is actually so grown in that it's starting to damage our equipment, ripoff lights, et cetera, on our graders. That's, you know, that's where it's identified, so.
Okay, thank you.
Can you keep going? 2024 line painting. Uh, an RFT was released on February 26th detailing 241 kilometers of various line barrier types as well as crosswalks and airport runway and staging markings. Contract was awarded on May 1st, 2024. I believe they're planning to start at the end of July. We're also using, further that, we're using, uh, alkali paint, which is an oil-based paint as opposed to water-based. We, some years ago we used water-based and didn't have much success with it. Pit reclamation. We're currently working in the Medley pit. We were this spring, uh, using it for some filler work and to appease the, our commitments to Alberta environment. Um, we're continuing to fill in the, the end pit lakes and level the crusher reject piles. And the work is ongoing as required. We have a couple more, uh, pit reclamation on the books as well. We'd like to get started on this here. Red Springs and the one up here at La Coria on Highway 41. And there's a breakdown of the concerns we received in the first quarter. And that's the end of the transportation report. Heard any questions on that?
Yes, Counselor, uh, Swagert.
Thanks, Mr. Reeve. No, I had kind of a, I had a call yesterday about Range Road, uh, no, about a week ago, two weeks ago, Range Road 444. And it was, I think there were, the MD was doing dust control. Uh, but I, I didn't know because I, I don't know. So I'll ask the same thing about dust control as with brushing. Uh, can residents go to the MD website and find out in advance when they're, when we're doing dust control? Or how do?
Through the reef to Counselor Swagert, um, we don't have our schedule of dust control because like I, uh,
Okay.
mentioned earlier, we, we don't know. We're kind of, we're not at the mercy of them, but we try and coordinate it with, uh, when industry does there. So we haven't, we haven't, we weren't doing any on, on Range Road 440, 444.
Oh, okay.
You can't, you can go onto the website and, uh, go under our dust control. And that's where, that's where, uh, we encourage the folks to apply for the dust control.
So is it possible industry was doing dust control on 444?
To my knowledge, they have not been, they have not started yet.
Okay, because the resident said that they were applying something to the road and, so, also, I guess my question then though is, um, I'd, I'd like to know when they're doing dust control in my area so that I can tell residents. Um, you know, I mean, we used to kind of be involved in that somewhat and that residents would call us maybe, but I guess they're just, I'm not even sure how it works now. I guess the foremen are just looking at the roads and realizing it needs to be done. It's just, I would like that to know, I don't know, six months in advance or, or something, just so if residents call me, I can tell them that we're doing, yeah. Is that reasonable?
Through the reef to Counselor Swagert, I don't know if six month is a realistic timeline.
Well, no, I don't care. I just, I mean, tell me the day of or whatever, just so that.
So I can work with, I can commit to working with our, our communications department and get a news release out, you know, a week prior to us starting our dust control operations and put it out on social media. That works.
Yeah, Counselor Fidiev.
So, so what, so with the dust control, the only people that are applying for it will be getting it, correct? Or less, there's an industry road?
Through the reef to Counselor Fidiev, that is somewhat correct. Um, the private residents that apply for it, uh, will receive it, um, as well as roads that we identify as requiring it. Uh, i.e. the 604 just south of town, the, the road to the garbage dump, we do that as required because there's a lot of traffic on it. No one puts a formal request in for it. Um, also, industry does do some, a lot of roads that, uh, are in front of residents as well. Their program's a lot larger than ours at this point. So, yeah, they, if they request it to us and it's, and the majority of the dust is caused by industry, we put it on their list and they, they complete the work.
You're good. Uh, Counselor Swagert?
So we're doing 65 kilometers of, like, okay, I guess ask specifically, uh, because we have to buy in, we have to order MG30 ahead of time. Um, we must know how much we're ordering and then what roads we're, do we know which roads we're gonna use MG30 on?
Beg your pardon, what was that again?
So MG30, it's something that we have to order ahead of time and it's delivered. Uh, so do we know which roads we're gonna do ahead of time?
Through the reef to Counselor Swagert, yes, prior to us ordering it, we try and order at least a truck at a time. We don't have to preorder it. It is, it's readily available.
Okay. And so that's why I'm, you know, I'm hoping that you, you can kind of let us know which MG30 areas you're gonna do. So I'll, I'll talk to that resident and say, no, they haven't done anything yet on that road, but we'll, yeah. Uh, maybe they were hoping for it, I'm not sure.
So you're saying there was no MG30 done yet this year in our MD?
That is correct.
Okay. Yeah, Counselor Slipchak.
I just got a question. I'm curious if you've got, uh, Township Road 634 on your radar about maybe cold mix that goes to Tucker Lake from north of Highway 55?
Through the reef, if it's the same, to Counselor Slipchak, if it's the same, uh, resident, I'm, I'm thinking, um, it's not on our list, the, it's on our list to augment the current cold mix dust control he has. He has an old one, 100 meters. We're gonna put 100 meters on each side of that.
Yes, Counselor Swagert.
Uh, I got another, I asked you this a while ago and you answered me, I think, but I wasn't sure of the, the date. So I got another call last night about Township Road 630, sort of 892 and going west, that section that hasn't been done. And so you said it was gonna be done this year. Is that, do you have a hard kind of schedule or at least a soft one?
Through the reef to Counselor Swagert, uh, I would anticipate it being done by the end of August. I don't have a solid date on it with this recent, uh, wel- welcomed rain. We've, we've got stuck on one of our shoulder pulls there north of Highway 55 and we're just trying, trying to get through that right now. And then, yeah, it, it is on the books this year. It will be completed this year.
Okay. And then the same guy that called also mentioned Range Road 444. And he just said it's really super rough north of 622, but I don't know if you need a note of it. I think they're gonna call it in anyway, so you'll have, you should have a recorded, uh, sort of complaint for that road, so, yeah, appreciate that.
If you called, it'll be on our concerns list for sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. I'd remind council, this is a quarterly update. Um, putting, uh, Mr. Dinenko on the spot about, uh, uh, everybody's current situation is, I think is a little unfair at a public council meeting. I would suggest if there are questions, just take it offline and I'm sure Mr. Dinenko would be, would be pleased to spend any amount of time required to talk about individual issues, but this is designed to be a quarterly update, what happened in the, in the quarter, uh, not what's happening today.
Thank you.
Mr. Cao, I just, I want to just maybe suggest though that, uh, I don't think council feels very comfortable asking any kind of questions where, if they don't make a notice, a motion, or like, I'm not sure when to bring up that kind of question. I mean, I guess I can phone, uh, Mr. Dinenko and ask him offline if that's what you'd like.
Uh, through the reef to Counselor Swagert, I'd ask all of council, does council share that concern?
Well, I hope you would.
Myself, it is a quarterly report. We could probably, if we wanted to have a more of a one-on-one, we could probably make it. But it is, it's just this quarterly.
No, I, I understand it's a quarterly report. I'm just not sure when are we supposed to ask these questions then?
Well, like I said, we could probably have a different session at a different time and, and, uh, I'm sure if we talked to Al and, uh, they could come in one day and we could do it.
Okay, because what I was gonna do is probably bring those up during my, uh, you know, my, my chance at the end of the meeting to talk. But I, I don't know, it just seems weird, like that we can't ask. And I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot.
Yeah, I understand. And, and Mr. Reeve, I would also, we get emails regularly from councils, uh, from councilors with their, with their individual, uh, road concerns. Concern line, if a counselor has a concern about a particular road, uh, direct the resident to the concern line or place the concern on the concern line, uh, themselves. Uh, but we regularly get the emails from, uh, from counselors regarding particular concerns. Uh, so I'm, um, I'm, I'm not sure what public forum we would like to discuss, uh, uh, you know, a particular road concern at unless it's a serious concern.
Well, I guess if something's not getting done and a counselor figures it's not getting done, I guess, you know, if he, if he wanted to get together, I guess that's when you'd get together if something wasn't getting done. But, uh, I think most of the stuff's getting done, but, uh, like I said, it's kind of tough to put you on the spot here, but you're doing a good job anyway. All right, any other comments or?
Just leave your mic off for the rest of the meeting.
All right, Dana's cut off. All right. Uh, I need, I just need a, a motion.
Uh, not yet, I don't believe. There's another report, yeah, for infrastructure.
Sorry. Oh, yes.
So the first quarter infrastructure report, first item is the 2024 design build of the Cherry Grove Fire Hall and Greater Shop. Uh, brushing of the proposed site was completed in-house. An RFP was posted January 12th. The layout of the Ardmore Fire Hall Greater Storage Building was used as a basis for the design. The contract was awarded April 29th, 2024. We've initiated the, the work. We probably expect them to be on site towards the end of June, early July for actual work happening on site. 2024 design build of the Bonneville Regional Airport Terminal, RFP was closed on February 27th with five submissions received. All the submissions exceeded our budgetary amounts. Therefore, the project has been put on hold until it can be revisited during 2025 budget deliberations. Bridge maintenance. This was a winter, winter opportunity maintenance was completed on approximately 10 bridges. This included sign repairs, replacements, barrier repairs and substructure repairs. We have a pretty comprehensive binder of all the, uh, from all the assessments on repairs that can be done. Haven't got to a lot of them over the past few years, but with this year with the lack of snow, these are the kind of things that we try and catch up on this and brush roadside brushing, et cetera. Bridge replacements, engineering work's been initiated for the lifecycle replacement of six aging bridge structures. Engineering would be this year, next year, likely in construction of these six, four of them are bridges and two are bridge-sized culverts. Some purchases, 2024 Western Star, Westerner chassis with a hydro vac. We received that this spring. We purchased the shop, Farmer Scott's Backhoe Shop in, with the yard in Glendon. Will house three graders with the potential for additional units and other, other, lots of other potentials for storage and so on and so forth. August fifteenth is our possession date. As a part of the ERP program, we purchased a twenty twenty-three compact track loader, CAT two nine nine D three X E, equipped with high-flow hydraulics for our multi-attachment. We also purchased a HO pack hydraulic compactor attachment for our Doosan excavator. It'll help us with culvert installations and reducing settlement, et cetera. Skid steer mounted debris blower. This is predominantly for use around the airport, around the landing lights and so on, so that we're not there with mechanical means to potentially to reduce the potential damage to them. We also purchased two land plots within the Aurora Borealis subdivision. And that is it for the infrastructure report. Any questions?
I got a question about your ERP truck. Have you guys used it and how is that working out now for you?
I'm not, through the reef to Councilor Slipchik, I can't speak to that. We were missing some plugs for some of the tanks on it as of the Public Works Open House, so, yeah, we haven't, we're, we're anxious to get it going because it's capable with some of the attachments of cleaning out some of these plug culverts that we have in the areas without doing a full removal, so I can, I'll update you on that when, when we get going here, hopefully in the next report.
Set, Packer, we bought for the mini hole or for like a three hundred plus hole?
Through, through, through the reef, it is for the mini hole.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, looking for a motion, I guess. Councilor Kravijak? Thank you, Councilor Kravijak, for making this motion that council accept infrastructure services two thousand twenty-four first quarterly report as information. Any discussion? We had quite a bit? Nope. I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. Thank you, Monte.
Another one here.
Nine point four point two? I believe.
Right, so today I have an RFD for the Town of Bonneville Sewage Dumping Rates. Proposal in background, when the MD closed their sewage lagoons to outside haulers, the Town of Bonneville and City of Cold Lake agreed to accept at their facilities for a fee, any septic, septage hauled from MD residences. The dumping fee charged at the Town of Bonneville facility, which was forty-five dollars a load plus nine dollars per cubic meter, exceeded the fee charged at the Cold, the City of Cold Lake facility, which was a flat rate of sixty dollars per load based on an average of ten cubic meters. In twenty twenty-four MD operational budget, council allotted, allocated funds to help offset the cost of dumping fees to the MD residents and task administration with working with the Town of Bonneville to adjust the dumping fee at their facility so that it would be, so that it would equal the fee charged at the Cold Lake facility. Administration, administration collaborated with the Town of Bonneville to calculate an amount to be paid to the town annually to have a dumping fee for MD residents of sixty dollars a load at the town sewage facility. This rate calculation had the MD contributing one hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollars to the town to offset the dumping rates for one year. As attached in appendix A. At the May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four Town of Bonneville Council Meeting, an RFD was brought forward to have the town accept a new rate as part of their bylaw fifteen sixty-nine dash twenty-four, respecting water, sanitary sewer and storm systems. Appendix B, an email confirming the town adopting the new bylaw that had the new rates for disposal was sent to administration, which is appendix C. Administration will draft an agreement with the Town of Bonneville outlining the terms of the payment and annual recalculation of the rate. Rate changes to be effective July first on an annual basis. Costs and source of funding, funds for the payment to the Town of Bonneville are included in the approved twenty twenty-four MD operational budget. Communications, notification to MD residents will be made through the MD social media outlets. Recommended action is that council accepts the Town of Bonneville Sewage Dumping Rates Report as information.
Thank you. Anyone like to make a motion or any comments? Yes? Okay, thank you Deputy Reeve Crick for making a motion that council accepts the Town of Bonneville Sewage Dumping Rates Report as information. Any discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Are we waiting for, Dana, did you vote?
Mr. Reeve, like this was new to us, so I, I really hadn't had time to go, go through all those appendix. I don't know if anybody else did either, so now I'm ready to vote, I guess.
That's carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nine point five?
Good morning.
Morning.
First, we have an amending draft, or sorry, we have the proposal to rescind policy number one point zero zero two, council appointments to boards and committees policy. Administration is bringing for this policy for council's consideration to rescind. Upon review of this policy, administration has determined that it is no longer required. As all relevant and pertinent content of the document can now be found in bylaw number seventeen forty-eight, Boards and Committees bylaw. And so as such, we are recommending to rescind this policy to reduce the risk of conflicts between the two documents and ensure uniform and consistent administration of board and committee appointments. Attached for council's review is the current policy as well as the current bylaw. And our recommended action is that council rescinds policy number one point zero zero two, council appointments to boards and committees policy as it is no longer required.
Thank you. Just looking for a motion.
Now make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Slipchik, for making this motion. That council rescinds policy number one point zero zero two, council appointments to boards and committee policy as it is no longer required. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Onto nine point five point two.
So administration has prepared an amended, an amending draft for policy number C dash one point zero one zero, councillor committee and board member remuneration policy for council's consideration. We are proposing amendments to this policy to enhance clarity and direction for the distribution and replacement of municipal resources allocated to members of council for administration. The amending draft is attached for council's review as appendix A. And our recommended action is that council adopts amending policy number C dash one point zero one zero, councillor committee and board member remuneration policy as presented.
Thank you. Any comments or would someone like to make a motion? Okay, thank you, Councilor Fadiev, for making a motion that council adopts amending policy number C one point zero one zero, councillor committee and board members remuneration, remuneration policy as presented. Tongue twister for me. Any discussion on this? Okay, I'll call for the vote. That's carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Onto ten, correspondence and information. Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. You can see the list of correspondence there. The two things I would highlight is we did receive an invitation to the Chamber Golf Tournament. I'm not sure what council wishes are regarding that. And the second thing of, of importance would be the letter we received from FCS S. The, the Assistant Deputy Minister will be here on July seventeenth. I think there was a meeting planned earlier that ended up being canceled, but it's scheduled for July seventeenth, twenty twenty-four at eleven a.m. to twelve thirty p.m. And it's an opportunity for stakeholders to engage in dialogue about the delivery of seniors' community supports. So I'm sure that our FCS S board members would likely be in attendance, but the invitation is here to, for basically all of councils that would like to attend. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Councilor Fadiev.
Yeah, I think because of the size of the room, I was told that it was only for board members. I, I did respond to it last time, but I was asked to. Not to come. That was for Bonneville FCS S.
You're, you're a board member on the FCS S there, so.
In Cold Lake, but.
You should come anyways.
Yeah, so that's, that's all right.
Yes, Councilor Swiger?
Are, are we all invited though? Because we, we sort of were last time and then told not to come, so I'm not sure how.
Mr. Reeve, members of council, the letter does not indicate a specific limit, so I'm assuming that the, that it'll either be based on space or, or depending on how many want to come. They did ask us to RSVP with a title of any attending. So I guess we would see if seven councillors wanted to attend, what the answer would be, but the, the letter does not have any particular restriction included in the letter.
But obviously they.
Was it last time?
Yeah, go ahead, Councilor.
If I can speak to that, I think last time they had the, the minister, I was out here and they had him at the FCS S building there in a smaller room. And this is just, this is a visit from the deputy minister and I think it can be scheduled anywhere, so I think just if you want to come, come. And I think, I'm pretty sure the FCS S, they'll correct me if I'm wrong. I'm pretty sure it's, we can have it maybe downstairs at the town office or something, right?
Information that they're providing us.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, the Ag for Life, when they're, it's talking about sort of ag education in school systems and, you know, I've had residents sort of ask me about the Ag for Life in schools because they used to kind of put on school programming. I, I don't know enough about this though, and I was just maybe wondering if we could get more input later from Matt Jansk because it was CC'd to him. So, and it's asking for twenty-five hundred dollars to kind of contribute to this, but I, it's not clear in there if that then allows local ag service boards to send representatives to the schools to teach kids about agriculture. So maybe we can get some more information on that from Ag Services or something?
Through the reef at Councilor Swiger, we certainly will. When Matt is back from vacation, we'll certainly ask him to prepare a report specifically on Ag for Life for council for a future council meeting.
Yeah, because I, I, yeah, thanks for that, because I think it would probably be a good investment if it's only twenty-five hundred bucks. I don't, don't know. Thank you. Anybody else?
So.
Yeah, go ahead.
Like, should we be asking questions here about the check registry or not? Look at, there's some, I'm curious on there.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I'm just, so one is easy docs for like twenty-three thousand. I'm just curious, did we put in some docs somewhere or is that for labor or?
Through the reef to Councilor Skarson, that was for the doc system at Chicken Hill.
At Chicken Hill? And then I might have missed this one or forgotten about this one, the snow dusters, ten thousand dollars?
Let me look into that and I'll get back to you.
And then Kevski account for twelve thousand dollars?
I believe through the reef that those are both for the community action grant recipients, but I'm just going to confirm that.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, looking for a motion then? Okay. Thank you, Councilor Kravijak, for making a motion that council accepts the following correspondence as information, one through eight. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. Looking, reports from council. Whoever wants to start, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Unfortunately, I wasn't at FCM. That sounded like it was a blast. I was at the FCS S yesterday in Cold Lake, so last month they served about four hundred and thirty-five patrons. The play zone will be completed this week. They had some structuring issues with the netting. I guess the, the sunlight kind of caused some stress to the actual netting, so that was, will be completed this week. So the kids will have another play zone to do, to play with. Last month, they had about a hundred and eighty volunteer hours. They're still looking for drivers for Meals and Wheels program. The Meals and Wheels program last month, we did a hundred and forty-two meals served with their family connections, which are ages zero through six. They had three hundred and twelve and overall they had about a hundred and fifty-five. The adaptive transportation for the city of Cold Lake, they served four hundred and thirty-eight patrons there. When the evacuation order came in from Fort Mac, they did a pretty good job and they reached out to the Coal Lake Act Society and they, they were a huge help to the evacuees and using their services over at the Coal Lake Act Society for that. So a big shout out to, to Dustin and, which is a, an MD resident and also, yeah, just a big, a big thank you to him and the Act Society for their help. That's everything.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Reeve. FCM, just a couple of little points on, on FCM that I sort of picked up. So the Green Municipal Fund, I, I guess is kind of vamped up again or whatever, but anyway, they're, they're talking about a few programs that the MD, I'm hoping, is kind of interested in. One was the tree planting program. And that's going to be a five-year, I think they said five-year program and, and I'm, I think Mrs. Keenbow knows about that one, but tree planting program, there's funding for trees. The other one was the municipal fleet electrification. And it, you know, there's an opportunity to get funding from FCM for electrification of the municipal fleet, but I'm one of these hydrogen guys, so I'd, I'd, you know, recommend that we kind of look, look at coming up with maybe hydrogen fuel cell modifications or whatever to, to some of our fleets and maybe be the leads in the area of, you know, to start that and maybe talk to a local trucking company to see if, if they're going to start doing that sort of thing. But it'd be nice to, you know, have the MD kind of shine for something and maybe, maybe that's something we could look at. There was some other discussions about artificial intelligence within municipalities and apparently it's, has, has started and it's helped a lot of, well, it's helped some municipalities so far. Colona was talking about it and so they have an artificial intelligence program. through Microsoft and it, examples were for planning development. And so for permitting, it's, it sped up their permitting applications from like months to days or hours or something, like it just sounded amazing for what they were doing. And so there's a possibility of kind of maybe reaching out to Kelowna and finding out how they're using artificial intelligence. They originally got a five or a half a million dollar grant, I think, from the government to work with Microsoft. So I'd asked them if, you know, if that information's available to other municipalities, so it might be. Quebec was also, they were using artificial intelligence. I think Quebec City maybe it was, but they've got a program similar to our eight-one-two-five-thousand program, but it's done through artificial intelligence, so apparently it speeds up a lot of that process. And so they're scanning in land use bylaws and, like, everything's kind of electronic. And so when people call in, they're talking to an artificial intelligence kind of person who takes all the information. So something to look forward to, it's coming apparently. So if we don't sort of start getting on board, I guess we get left behind. Thank you.
Thank you.
We had an FCSSS board meeting between the last council meeting and now. And other than that, it was just FCM and I made a few notes. Calgary said they were, the city of Calgary said they were short over three hundred million dollars each year. There was a few resolutions that we, there was, I think, six or five resolutions. The first one was asking for basically more RCMP and better, and training for them, so it was kind of in favor of that one. Second resolution that hit the floor was titled biodiversity protection and restoration for funding for municipalities. But it was basically asking for federal government to use tax dollars to fund municipalities to buy up land. And they, they did, they cited in the, in the reference on that one how IPCAs were, were a good thing. And we all know the issues we're having with IPC around here and we don't, just a tool for them to shut down industry. So I did speak against that one and that one got defeated, which was quite positive to see. And got the opportunity to ask the Prime Minister when he's going to balance the budget and he never answered the question. So that was the highlight to me.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have any other work. Thank you.
I attended on June fifth, they had a barbecue, BNR put out on for the seniors, citizens here for, at the seniors drop center. So I just want to give a shout out to BNR for doing that again this year. A good turnout, lots of the elders enjoyed that. Also, I attended FCM, was honored to be the ambassador for the M.D. at the RMA Hospitality Suite, met a lot of councillors from the east to the west coast. And are all having, seems like issues like we are in our community. And from the long-term councillors and going to FCM, they said that was the best hospitality suite they've ever experienced there with RMA, so a big shout out for RMA, how they performed and really outdid themselves. And the three hundred and eleven, eleven million dollars that councillor, our Deputy Reeve Crick mentioned about the city of Calgary, well, but she doesn't mention that she puts in over twelve, twelve million dollars to art and then a hundred million dollars into bike lanes, but like, they said like it's always a province fault, but anyway, that's all I got to say.
I had FCSSS meeting as well. Town of Bonneville is supposed to be your transportation policy. Probably tonight. KDM Dana Packie is coming for a visit July seventeenth, discussing seniors issues. At Bonneville Library meeting, nothing to report there, business as usual. Had a Glendon Library meeting last night, spent hours going through policy. We need to have our policies finalized by September. So it was a long meeting, very exciting. Had a policing committee. Bonneville is still seven short-staffed. So officers, of course, they're able to do what they have to do, but they, they have an extra workload. Six hundred and seventeen files created in April. Hundred and twelve were trafficked, fourteen mental health calls for eleven clients. The GIS is down to only one member now. Cold Lake, eight hundred and forty-nine files from May thirteenth to June tenth. CRU Crimes Reduction Unit, twelve files. There's still three vacancies, four are identified to be transferred out. There's two new members at various stages of recruiting, recruitment. Two recruits are graduating June seventeenth, one in July fifteenth. And no members are being transferred to Cold Lake. Person crimes are up ten percent, property crimes up nine percent, mental health calls up one hundred percent. And roadside alcohol suspensions are down twenty percent. That's all for me. Thank you.
Mr. Reeve, I had, I had one more comment. It was just interesting, at the trade show, ran into somebody that was doing audio, audio video stuff and they said, oh, you're from the, or they said, oh, you're from Bonneville. I said, well, no, I'm the M.D. of Bonneville, but he said, no, we were just up at the M.D. of Bonneville looking at your audio video stuff for an upgrade, so hopefully that's coming. Pardon me?
We could sell them our old stuff.
We could probably sell them our old stuff. I, I would assume staff knows about that.
Yep, they're shaking their heads.
Nodding.
Yeah.
Nodding and smiling.
But no, it is, it is true. We kind of need an upgrade on this because I know a lot of folks have trouble hearing it, so it's not great.
Okay, I don't know where to start, but I was also in Calgary. And the most positive thing is when Esther would come down, she'd have a big smile on her face, so she, it was really good to have her. So she was always bubbly there, so we didn't have a lot of things to be bubbly about. I don't want to bash the mayor of Calgary, but she was bashing the province of Alberta pretty hard and the premier. I didn't think it was the time or place to be doing that and it was pretty tough to listen to. And then, you know, the people were applauding her for bashing Alberta and the premier and our, and then the next day we're making a resolution that we're not supposed to be bashing people and the same people that were bashing and cheering the previous day are now making a resolution that we don't do that in Alberta. I just, I found it just amazing that, and it was like ninety percent that the people voted for that. I just couldn't understand. So I really don't think we should be investing any more money in going to this conference anymore. That's just my personal opinion. But we'll have a chat or with council here in upcoming months to see where we go because it just doesn't make sense to me. I got pretty riled up at that convention because it just didn't make sense to me. But like I said, Esther was the most positive thing that I seen. I went to a few session with her. The only problem with the session is they had people just going one after another every five minutes. And I wish they would have had a little, a few less people going and then, you know, we could have asked a few questions, but these poor people were just like, it was just, they're whipping them through there. There was probably sixteen, sixteen people speaking within an hour there, so it's, it's pretty crazy. So that's all I'd like to say. Yeah, go ahead, Council Fideev.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Reeve. Just want, I just got a phone call just the other day regards to our transportation department, so I just want, just to read you his message. It says, hey, Ben, it's Scott here. Was just phoning and say, big thanks, kudos to the M.D., Public Works Road guys. I have phoned them a bit, a bit ago on a bumpy road yesterday and they were out there pronto. Fixed it and they did a great job. I just thought I'd give you a heads up. And I did call the shop to thank them as well.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. I also had a phone call from, we were doing some brushing in the area. I don't know where it was. But the guy said, thank you. It sure improved their road, so. Mr. Reeve?
Yes, go ahead.
Prior, I think when council reports are completed, Ms. Keenbow does have a couple of answers for Councilor Skarson's check register questions.
Thank you. I think we're done. Come on up.
So yes, the Bonneville Snowduster Snowmobile Club did receive a community action grant. It was for a moderate capital project and it was a contribution of ten thousand dollars towards the purchase of a tract machine for trail grooming. Kevski High also received a moderate capital grant and theirs was for maintenance at the facility.
I don't remember those, but was that, are those from council motions or is that just applying?
Through the Reeve, it's, it's, at those levels, it's administration that goes through and does those.
Because I'm sure that the snow dusters came and presented and we denied them and then, so then they went through you to apply, is that right?
Through the Reeve, they did not apply through, in two thousand twenty-four. They had applied previously, if I remember correctly, and hadn't been, weren't successful at that time.
It was two thousand twenty-three and it was a lot, you remember, it was a lot bigger ask, I think, than, yeah. It was a bigger ask and then we denied it.
Yeah, Cold Lake had asked, but then the snow dusters had too. Anyways, I was just curious, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Esther.
Thank you.
No closed session? Okay. All right, well, thank you, council. You guys did an excellent job and staff. Thank you.
I just want to make one comment after we adjourn.
Okay, I need someone to adjourn. Yeah, Council Deputy Crick? I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you.